Just a reminder, please make sure your phones are either off or on vibrate. If not, it's a $50 fine that goes into the Holbrook Vacation Fund. So leave them on. At this time, if everybody would please rise, we are pleased with us to have Father Clemente from the St. James Catholic Church with us, who's going to lead us in our prayer and our invocation.
Dear Heavenly Father, on behalf of the Town Council of Lake Placid, I ask you that you guide and bless in a special way each and every one here present, and inspire each one of us to reflect your will in all things. Sometimes it's not easy of how to guide us. We put all in your care, all that this town of Lake Placid continue to rely on you and your inspiration and guidance to each one of us. We realize that everything we have and everything we do, we owe it to you and your immense love. We will never comprehend fully your immense love for us. Guide us so that we can be more aware of how important you are to each one of us, that we can reflect your love in abundance, especially when dealing with the people and the issue in a town of Lake Placid. You have blessed us much, and for this we are grateful, that we may pass on this gratefulness in our action we undertake and go with blessings today for all the action and deliberation that lies ahead of us. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'll now call to order the Lake Placid Community Development Agency, CRA, regular meeting to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Councilmember Worley?
Here.
Councilmember Charles?
Here.
Councilmember Everhart?
Okay. We'll go to consent agenda one.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda one as posted.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it the audience. Saying none, bring him back. Pull the council, please.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, CRA discussions on plan or project changes based on discussions at the workshop.
Just a quick comment. I wasn't at the workshop, but if any of the council members wanted to kind of lead what the discussion was, or if they wanted to, there was discussion about whether to include ad members, which you could do here, or you could do, actually is under a board agenda, I'm sorry. But if you wanted to make any project changes, it takes a supermajority of the board. So that's a discussion amounts to council, whether you do it with the additional two members, once you've added those two members, or if you want to do anything with any facade changes or changes to the project. So just leave that up to council discussion.
Well, I think we were waiting for a decision about what a supermajority was. One of the questions we had at the meeting was, a supermajority, what is that comprised of?
A regular majority would be three of five, or 50% plus one, being three of five, four of seven, would be a regular majority if you add two. Supermajority would be five of seven, or six of seven. I would suggest the council make a decision as to what supermajority is when the council appoints. Right now, we're in a CRA board meeting, as I understand. So you would appoint your two members when you're in your council meeting, and I would in that motion define what you want them to act as a supermajority, be it six or seven. I'm sorry.
Five or six.
Five or six. Because four is a simple majority.
And then also, I was doing a little reading on that, too, and it has to be clarified at that time, if it's a supermajority of those present, or a supermajority of those in the total.
I agree, you should clarify that at the time. I worried about that, because there are several ways you can define it. You could say, a minimum of five votes. Then if somebody's absent, you've still got to have five votes. Or do you want to say, if two are absent, we're going to do it with four votes?
Yeah.
That's council decision. I would defer to you.
I think when we get to the council part of the meeting, we're going to need your help with that, because it's, to me, it's confusing, and we want to get it right, of course.
I agree. It's unfortunate it was left undefined, but, you know, folks do the best they can, and every little thing, something falls through, and this did. I would think spending public money, I would say, if I were on council, I would suggest a minimum of five affirmative votes. That's a supermajority of seven, and if you've got too many people absent, I'd still require five affirmative votes.
And just another question, just for clarification at that workshop, is that's where the supermajority comes in to change the plan, which today, the plan doesn't include facets, facets, but it does include infrastructure. So that would be one supermajority. And then my clarification is, we've got a list of projects that are approved, some have purchase orders outstanding. That would also include a supermajority if we were to change any of those, you know, that are listed. So is the supermajority for both the plan and the approved projects, or just the plan changes?
I believe the supermajority is for your plan changes, or your project additions.
Project additions, but not changes to approved projects.
That's a...
I mean, because what came up is, there's a few projects that have been on there for many years. When do they get stale? Something like that. So, you know, at what point do, does something that may be older, not the priority that something that just came up?
Approved projects are part of an approved plan, and can be modified at any time by a majority of the CRA.
Majority, supermajority?
Supermajority.
Okay, perfect.
The supermajority is limited to a list of eligible projects. Eligible.
Which is the plan?
Which is your plan, yes.
Okay, perfect.
And your plan, changes in your plan also has to comply, there's a whole Florida statute on how to change your plan.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Any other discussion on two?
I could just suggest that if it, 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 it sounds like we are going to, when we get in council meeting, to expand the board to seven people, and it would seem prudent to wait on any plan or project changes until we have those seven people on board, because we don't want to make, you know, changes now, and then, you know, two more people come on, and they've got great ideas, and now we're, you know, we've already done this. So that would put it, I was thinking that we would probably put it to, what did you suggest, Kevin, July? Because we only have a couple of people that have stepped up, so we would maybe keep it till the July meeting, to see who we have to choose from.
That was my recommendation for board appointments, because we've only had two weeks for the public to respond to applications. So that was my suggestion, was to wait for the July meeting to make those board appointments.
I think that's, I think that's a good idea as well, because people need time to, to find the application, fill it out, send it in, you know, et cetera.
So you're saying two weeks, but at the last meeting, a month ago, we approved adding two, and we told people that, you know, we'll be putting something on the website. So the people have been aware for a month that we are going to add two. That was an approved motion. So your two weeks, as you're saying, is based on when it actually went out on a website to say, we're adding two people?
Yes, the, when we, when we got the applications up on the website, when we had some clarification, and so, and we also got it on the Nextdoor app. It's entirely up to the council.
Okay.
Doesn't make any difference to me. So that's, if you want to do it tonight, you can. You have two applicants now, so prior to, prior to this week or last week, you only had one applicant for two positions. So it's entirely up to the council.
That'll be at the council meeting.
That's the council meeting, yes.
There are people here tonight, I believe, have ideas for the CRA. I'd like to suggest that we take their ideas now, and then add to them?
Sure, we can, we can certainly listen, of course, sure.
I like that, because the timing's coming up for the budget, and that was some of the questions that came out at the workshop. How do we get feedback from business owners and the public on ideas that we should consider as part of the CRA projects? And timing is really good right now, with the budget process coming up.
Okay. Why are you?
Want to go to the next one?
Well, let's see what they want to do with three.
Okay.
So we'll go to number three, CRA projects. We've got the 151 Dow Hall.
Let me get down to that real quick. So, anyway, we have closed on 151 Dow Hall on Friday, so it is now our property. We're purchased property, the idea is to make improvements to the property, and as a benefit of the community, provide additional meeting spaces, kind of the plan, additional parking for both the park and Main Street, and then possibly a covered patio for birthday parties, irrigation and new playground equipment. These are all items that would be covered under the, in the current CRA plan. I believe I have a, this is just a conceptual that we came up with in-house. It does not include any drainage, retention ponds or areas, so it would have to change. We could be creative with previous parking and some of the other issues, but I wanted to get some input from the CRA board, and find out if they wanted to list this as a CRA project, and then where we would go on a prioritization as far as funding, and it doesn't have to be a decision tonight, I just wanted you to look at it. The next CRA meeting, it meets quarterly, so the next CRA meeting is August? No, until September.
September.
September, but we have budget meetings as, as involved in that, so you have CRA budget meetings, so these could be included. And, but this is just a potential layout, so I wanted to get input from the council.
Okay, for, well, for example, to flesh out the budget, rather than the extra parking on the right-hand side, a lot of people had asked for a splash park, you know, the kind where you push a button, and it, little fountains come off for, you know, five minutes or whatever. And maybe rather than a conventional children's park, do the, for adults also, the exercise circuit type of, are you familiar with those? And something other than just parking in that area.
What, what is the requirement for the number of parking spaces that we would need for this?
To me, my knowledge was, is that we're trying to create additional parking for our new businesses down Main Street, in our very successful Main Street. This was going to help some of the overflow as well. But yes, I don't know the actual, right now, we never had really any parking, I don't think, for this area, other than just pull off the road. So this would be organized parking.
So, so before we get, because, you know, there is a lot of parking on Main Street, and we just heard that with the Health Department building, we have permission to park there, so we probably just need to find signs to put up to say where public parking is. I know, and I'm not good, but on the corner of, is it Observation, where Bents is parking, that's a parking lot that's our parking lot, but people don't know it's public. There's no sign that says public parking. But I concur with what Zebra Hart's saying, is on the concern of parking where there's green space. I mean, I had envisioned when we were going to buy this, this is great, we've got a building, we can rent it out for birthday parties, other little parties, we've got a playground, and then we've got green space. And green space is something, you know, for youth and families. And so there's a lot of parking there, and the parking on the backside with Observation, if we took the parking out of the green space, and you can probably get eight more parking spots up where you're coming into that green space parking lot. But kind of the first question is, with this building, with what we plan to do, is there a number of required parking spaces that we have to have?
I don't have that answer tonight. It is probably, based on the size of the building, ten or 12 spots. So you probably have more than enough.
We have more than enough, yeah. So I mean, to me, is, I'm concerned, and I'm not supportive of putting all that parking where it's inside the current fenced area today. I had no concerns of considering CRA money, nicer fence area, a splash pad, whether it's playground equipment, or I like the exercise, I thought of that even for Divine Park, you know, having those little stations where, as you're walking, then you can do your push-ups and different things. So I really like that idea. Whether this location is ideal for or not, I'm open to that. But I'm not supportive of taking one-third of this new property and making it parking.
The first thing I saw was just the, which I thought was genius, is just one, one-way parking through the, if you're looking at this drawing, at the right end, and just having those spaces there, and not having the other ones. This has been a very successful park. There's a lot of people that use it with children, so, yeah. And I'm not sure, I think our town administrator does have a lot of experience with splash parks. I think that we have always wanted one. I know Mr. Royce was in agreement with me, but there, it was kind of cost prohibitive. But our town administrator is very well versed in that, and I think it's a great idea, in Florida especially, splash parks. I mean, I've been to centers where they have those, and it's wonderful. It's really a wonderful event. Where to put it is the question. And you know, remember, right now, unless we change what we're going to do, we only have $36,000, so that limits this as well.
But we have more money coming.
Yeah, when we see the budget, woo, maybe we'll get some more money. I mean, the Journal Plaza also did some building this year. I don't know if that's going to come in, too. I thought about that over, since we met, and I thought, whoa, those buildings are probably going to maybe hit this year as well, maybe not till next year. I'm not sure how that's all going to fall with the taxation, but we should be getting some more money in, which is to the CRA.
We'll be happy to come back with an exercise, a drawing for an exercise path, or a splash pad. You can have multiple options. This is just, as I said, this was just one, and we were trying to work on parking that, partially for Main Street. So happy to come back and give you some examples, and, and we'll come back with cost estimates for splash pads and, and the maintenance of those, and where they're at. So that's a simple thing to, to bring back. That'll be, come back at the next CRA meeting, which is the August meeting, just so you know, I mean, for a timing issue. There's no rush on this, we just closed on it. I just wanted to go ahead and bring it up.
So how does that work with the budget, then? So the next CRA meeting is August, but the budgeting for the CRA meeting is at the same time as our budgeting for the town? So I feel there's a little disconnect there of putting items in the budget that haven't been discussed or approved at a CRA meeting.
Yep. Eva? No, I'm looking at you. Yeah, I don't know if we've ever done, how we've done that, or we added projects during the budget meeting? I mean, I can bring back, design changes won't take long. If you want to earmark, I mean, any portion or whatever, you're going, you only have $36,000 today. You're going to have another close to $200,000 in October. So that's a question and a prioritization of where you want to spend the money, and certainly it's going to take more than tonight's discussion. So, and you're going to approve every project as it moves forward. So that's, you can include 151 Dow Hall as a CRA project, and don't have to assign a budget. You're going to assign a budget moving forward, and we'll give you a, present you with a budget for various options. Again, I think the quick estimate on this budget, Dennis, was $200,000 or something like that, so just for the paving?
Yeah.
So that would take all of next year's money if you just did that. So I'm not recommending that, I'm just saying, that's an example. A playground, if you put a regular playground in, is $100,000 to $150,000, which is going to take most of that money. If you did a splash pad, it's going to be a multiple of that, depending on whether you're trying to delay it and apply for a, a FEDAP grant, which would be my recommendation for any of this. Playground equipment, I think is a multi-year project that, you know, would become part of that FEDAP grant application for the playground, or whatever, or splash pad, whatever you want to do. Anyway, just options to consider. We can bring back a number of different pricing options as part of the budget. So nothing gets, all it does is put the project in the list until you go and approve. Yes, we want to do this project, and we're going to prove it, and then we're going to go out to bid, and then we're going to have a real item, and then you're going to prove that one before you go build anything.
So would it be appropriate, then, to make a motion to add this to the CRA project list, and develop it further as, as we move on? Just to put it at least on the list for development and consideration as we move into the next year?
Well, it's hard for me to put it in the, I can't put a budget number in the budget if I don't have it as a project. So yes, I would say that. You're not, you're not spending any of the money, you're not designating that this is what's happening next, but it at least gives me, it follows the proper order. It's now a CRA project, and then we start working on a budget to go in and tie in with that CRA project. So yes, there is a little disconnect with the quarterly meetings, unless y'all decided to change when the meetings happen. So there is a little disconnect on the budget and, and the meeting schedule, a little bit, because this is June, and you would normally go have projects approved, and we'd be working on them for the budget in July and August. So we just didn't have timing. We didn't have this property until Friday.
So I'll make a motion that the 151 Dow Hall bicentennial park improvements be considered and be put on the list for CRA projects moving forward, and that design and actual, what it's going to actually contain, will be developed as the time goes on.
I'd second that.
Okay, got a motion, a second. Any further discussion from the podium?
I guess my question, I'm fine with that, but I'd also like to hear more ideas from the public.
That's going to come up under number four. Okay.
Well, okay, but if something comes up on number four that we like better than this motion, how does that work? That's what I'm saying is, I guess I was thinking that we would develop based on our ideas, the public's, and then determine what should be put on a list with the limited money. So maybe I'm thinking that different.
I think it, it can all go on the list. I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a limit to the list, is there?
No.
Perfect.
Because we haven't, we haven't allocated any money, we just want to put it on the list for consideration. We don't, we haven't even agreed on a plan for it yet.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, that's fine.
You can have a list of 12 items, and then, well, we, then we just have to narrow them down and prioritize them on the order that they'd want to get done.
And that would be at the budget meeting, or at the August meeting? Where you narrow it down, then?
Well, I guess that depends on the scope of what everybody wants to have done.
Okay.
And if we have dollar figures on what we've decided to do or not, it could still just stay on the project.
Of course, and everything's going to be, be based on the dollars we get, too, so, you know, there's, there's a little bit unknown there, but, but, yeah, no, I don't disagree with you, it's just, we, we just got to have something to go by and figure out what we want to do and how we want to do it. Okay?
Yeah. The council sets priorities, and you can make those priority changes at every meeting. It's in the pans, you can add projects at the other meetings. You're just going to have to sign a budget or modify the budget based on what you get. Right now, you have $36,000, so based on the next budget, anticipated funds, we'll, we'll develop a budget, but that's subject to change based on your votes.
Mayor, can I just, so the workshops will be two separate workshops. One's going to be the towns workshop. You will have a CRA workshop, which you can talk about your list and your projects, but you really don't adopt that until your CRA meeting, which is in September. So those three workshops are going to be not only just town budget, but you also have your CRA budget, that projects, I think, can be talked about. You don't vote at the workshops, so you could make that list up, and then when you go for your adoption of your projects and adoption of the budget at the September first hearing, and then final adoption that following week.
Yeah.
So we would, let me understand that, because I'm, I'm stuck on an August meeting for CRA, and then...
CRA is a September meeting, because we're...
Oh, so it said earlier, somebody said August, that's why.
Yeah, no, it's a quartering.
I wasn't adding in my, that was my fault.
Okay, then that makes sense. I was going to say, so the next CRA is September, of which we will then adopt the CRA budget based on workshop and other list of items that are...
You'll instruct staff of, you know, and that has public input, it's all public meetings, so, you know, you'll be able to discuss those projects.
If I may. We really haven't developed a five-year, true five-year plan for the CRA, which we need to do. I mean, we have a, I asked Alan to put together a list this morning, we have basketball courts, we have Taylor Park, we have Stewart Park, we have Johns Park, we have bicentennial park, all which have needs for infrastructure and replacement pieces, and, and so, so we would like to develop a five-year plan, so that we're working on anticipated dollars and not really, I mean, part of, part of the issue in the past, to be completely honest, you started with zero money in your CRA, is incremental financing, so, and you build up enough money, so you're going to do a couple of paving, you're going to do the alley, which has been talked about for two or three years, you're going to do some other paving projects, sidewalk projects, and it's going to take the bulk of your money. So it's, it's a slow process to build that equity, if you will, in the CRA, and where that money gets spent. But we do need, we do need multiple items, a longer list that we can work on, and develop that into a five-year, true five-year program.
Or longer, because we, we just talked about parks, and we haven't talked about Main Street and Inner Lake, and beautification of the town.
And we can revise this at any time. I mean, maybe something came up that was just so wonderful, that, you know, superseded everything else. I mean, there's nothing to say we can't change, but I think we just need to get a plan, we need to go forward and make a list. I'd like to hear from the public as well. So I think we should, you know, if you, I think we have a motion on the floor, so we should vote on that, and then we should move on to the public.
That's what I was going to ask, if there was any more comments on number, number three. Hearing none here, we'll take it the audience.
Ken LeBlanc, can we bring back up the drawing of the, the park? And I completely understand, this is just a sketch of options, right? I agree with what Colleen says, I mean, you could put as many parking spaces up on that high end as you could put in there, and I would absolutely preserve that grass area for, for developing the park. I mean, the park becomes very small if you do both parking areas there. But what I would probably do is not do either of those parking areas, but pave the top end on Observation, and then take the sidewalk on the left side there, bring it to city property, and connect it to the county parking lot, which is just three or four doors away. And, and just, you know, make a nice... And, and just, you know, make a nice, easy access and let people know there's additional parking over there. And that's always available, especially at the time when parents are coming here with their kids and stuff like that. So, that's how I would probably handle that. But I, kudos for buying it. I think it was a great idea to buy that park. But other projects I would do with that park is, you know, that six-foot-tall galvanized steel fence is sketchy looking. You know, I would take that out, and I would go to just a, you know, black wrought iron type, you know, not six-foot-tall fence around the perimeter of the park. You got to have a, you got to have something there so kids don't kick balls in the street and chase it, or kids don't run in the street, but it doesn't need to be a six-foot-tall galvanized chain link fence, you know? I think everything that I would like to see done in this downtown would be higher-end. And so, I think to upscale it would be a really good idea, and I think, you know, future renovation of the pavilion, you know, to rent out for parties and all that is a great idea. New playground equipment, I know, is not cheap, you know, because it's got to meet all the requirements of ADA and this and that and everything else. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of projects that need to happen there, but I think master planning that particular park is a good idea, and spending, you know, as much money as would cost to do all this parking, you know, when you could just park across the top, create a sidewalk, and then get on to fencing and renovation and all that stuff. I think the money can go a lot further by master planning a list of projects to do at the park and what the priority is and so on. So, I think there's lots of great can come from this park. So, I'm looking forward to, you know, what you all are going to do there, so.
And I think this is what's great about our community, that this is the kind of feedback that, that we're going to need and what we're going to ask for. Yeah, this was just a conceptual that, that, that we put out there. Nothing is done in concrete here. So, anything anybody wants to see here, yeah, get it to us. We'll take a look at it, and like you said, we'll bring it back to council, and we'll see what everybody wants to do. Okay? All right, anything else? All right, none. We'll go to number four, citizens, not on the agenda.
Can I make one more?
Oh, wait a minute, we got to vote on it. That's right. Sorry, clerk.
Eva, could you please reread the, the motion so we're clear on what we're voting on, please?
Usually I go back and listen, so, 151 improvement, this is just shorthand, considerate, for consideration and put on projects list with, to include design costs. Did I miss anything?
We're going to add.
Thank you, Father Clemente, for being here.
We're going to add the 151 Dahl Hall bicentennial park to the CRA projects list for, and we'll look at it later for further development and input, like we just had, maybe in a workshop or something. But just, at this point, just add this to the CRA projects list for development.
Got it.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Joy? You were my second. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we got a motion, a second. Go ahead and poll the council.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
I just wanted to make one more comment. When I was researching the CRAs, we haven't even tapped some of the benefits of the CRA, which is granting ability. I went up to Sebring and saw the most beautiful park for children, very advanced, that was all done with grant money, that was done through the CRA. So, we're just starting to tap what the CRA can do, which is get grants on its own. And that was the most innovative, wonderful park I'd seen for children. So, we're just going to work through this, and we're going to get there. So, I think that's something else we're going to be looking at.
Okay. Okay, we'll go to number four, citizens not on the agenda at this time. If any of you have any comments or projects you'd like to see come before CRA, now's your time.
Citizens not on the agenda, right? Citizens not on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a question about the, the layout for the parking, which is part of the, the new pickleball courts. Okay? The, I've been out there and looking at the boat ramp.
We're not in the right place.
Pickleball port will come up under the regular meeting.
Okay.
It's confusing. We have a CRA meeting, and then we close this meeting, then we open the council meeting, and that's part of the council meeting.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's great.
That's okay.
All right. But we're on number four, CRA project updates? We're not on citizens, not on the agenda. We're on number four.
Well, that is number four. Citizens not on the agenda.
It's a CRA project update.
You've got an updated one.
Well, okay. I'm not looking at, apparently, I'm not looking at the most recent. I don't know either, but never mind. Thank you.
All right. Ken LeBlanc, sorry I wasn't at the last CRA meeting. I was out of town, or I would have been here. So, I'd just like to bring a few things up, and I'll be really quick, because I know you've got another meeting to do tonight. So, in the historic downtown, things that, well, one, I think a five-year plan is a great idea. I, I think, you know, we should have a five-year, a 10-year, and a 20-year ultimately, but you got to start somewhere, which is a five-year plan. So, I think that's a great place to start. Things that, that myself and business owners that I'm aware of in the downtown would like to see in the downtown, you know, sidewalks pressured clean, street sweeping, we'd like to see. For years, we've wanted to see banners on the light poles, not just Christmas banners, but banners that say, you know, "Welcome to Historic Downtown," like Placid, things like that, you know, that can point out the train museum, that can point out the, the clown college, the chamber of commerce, things like that. But we've never had an avenue to do that. So, I think the CRA could be an avenue to, to put banner signs in downtown that are directional, I think directional signs downtown, which are posts that have signage that go to specific businesses, and the way I think they do that in other places, the town provides the system. And then, if there's a business that wants to be on the pole, they have to meet the requirements, and they got to pay the fee to have the sign made to be added to the city's pole. You know, I think that's a good idea. So, yeah, so just things like that are the ideas that we've had, you know, for quite a while, and just had no avenue to do it. I also think, I think Colleen had been mentioning, we need a way for people to bring their ideas about, you know, what to do downtown and stuff. I don't think everybody coming to a town council and talking in front of you is, is realistic, because not everybody feels comfortable doing it. But I think even if there is a form people could fill out, they could drop it off downtown, they could submit it through, through online system or something. So, there may be other people that we're not even aware of that have ideas about our historic downtown. Have you considered doing this? Consider doing that? It would be nice if there was a system in place, just simple as a comments box or, box or something like that, for people to be able to submit their ideas, because we don't have all the ideas. There's other people out there who do, and just, you know, then you've captured everybody's ideas. You either come in front of you guys and talk, or you submit a form online or drop it off to Eva or something like that. I think would be a good idea. And, but I, I think, you know, it all starts with a, a master plan. The drainage ditch in front of the Journal Plaza, you know, for years, we've wanted to see that turned into a parking lot. I know it's complicated, because you'd have to put the drainage underground to put a parking lot on top of it. The county owns the, the drainage ditch and everything else, but, you know, that's where you start planning it now, and maybe five years from now, it gets accomplished. But we've done a drawing that shows we could probably add 28 parking spaces on top of that retention pond. It'd be a great place to have future parking. And I know some people say, well, we had a parking study, and parking study said we didn't have any parking problem. We may not have, we have, may have enough adequate parking scattered about in downtown now, but maybe not five years from now, maybe not eight years or 10 years from now. So, this is just planning in advance, but I think that should be part of our, our master plan, as well as other projects in and about the downtown. So, flowers on light poles. I don't know if you guys realize how much the flowers in the Journal Plaza get people out of their cars and into the plaza, but it's huge. So, flowers in downtowns, if you just go to successful downtowns all over the place, the thing they got in common is they all have flowers, whether they're in pots sitting on top of the ground, whether they're hanging from light poles, or whether they're in the ground. Yep, there's a, yeah.
These are the ones that you sent me earlier, and I ran off copies?
Yeah.
So, I'll just send them down the line?
Oh, that'd be great. Yes, I, I had given Joy some copies of some of these ideas, and so she's going to just pass them down, so you guys can see the things that I'm talking about.
And just pass them all down?
But these are all ideas that we have not had an avenue before to get them into your hands in order to get them, you know, as part of this. So, we're hoping that they all filter through, and maybe they become part of the plan. All right? So, and this is just a starting point. Some of these, I think we should try and get our, the most bang for the buck we possibly can. If everything we go for is infrastructure, infrastructure's expensive, but some of these things can be much less expensive. I mean, you could pressure clean the sidewalks, you could street sweep, you can deal with landscaping. I mean, those things are not the most expensive things to do. Those are the least expensive things to do. So, maybe we can do things like pressure clean the sidewalks, street sweep, deal with landscape areas, get some flowers in downtown and stuff like that, and maybe we've spent $50,000, you know? And I also, I know we do a lot of work downtown through volunteerism for the landscape areas, which is, I believe has been stated that's a problem, because not as many people are volunteering to do the work of all of that. You know, there was a time when, I think, we were mostly volunteer fire departments, and now we're, we've gone to staffed, you know, fire departments, which obviously costs more money than volunteer. But at some point, I think, as a town and a city, county, we have to make transitions from things that are volunteerism to things that are just flat-out paid for, you know? And maybe we need to transition more away from only relying on volunteers to take care of landscape areas and rely on, you know, hiring TWQ, Jose I. Benes, you know, various companies around here that are all landscapers, you know, and do it and do it well. And so, I think we need to consider the possibility that maybe it's time to start doing some transitioning when it comes to landscaping in downtown and beautification. And, and so, those are just some of the thoughts that I think we need to consider. Yeah.
Ken, I'm sorry, I have a rookie question. What are you defining as downtown?
The historic downtown I'm referring to is going to be mostly Main Street and Inner Lake, you know?
Okay. So, would it be Inner Lake all the way to 27, and Main Street, how far north and south?
Yeah, I mean, Main Street right now would be to New Hope, Foster's was right next to it, to be up to there, but eventually, there'll be more construction happening down the street. So, once more construction happens where there's actually businesses there, then they would be incorporated as well.
You're talking about going toward the school, toward the Montessori school? Is that what you're talking about?
No, no, the other direction.
The other direction, okay.
The other direction. And then, in the other direction, it should go past the Journal Plaza. Eventually, there's some property that'll get developed there, so that would also be captured. So, I think you have your limits. Well, I think you have to master plan the total limits of that historic district now, and then, as developers go to develop, and there's right-of-way next to their property, and city parking ought to be on that right-of-way, you can ask the developer, "We would like to you to pay the cost of putting the parking on city property in front of your project." Right?
And is that historic district, is that delineated yet, the historic district? I thought we, we're going to talk about.
I think our problem, it, it, we have a CRA, CRA district, and historic district is fully within the, the CRA district. What we don't have is a historic downtown code. We have a code that works for 27, works for Wawa.
Right.
And then, in the historic downtown, you either fit into it, or you have to ask for variances on everything. We should have, in my opinion, we should have two different codes, one for the strip on 27, one for the historic downtown. They should have their own codes that are completely separate of each other, and they make sense in those situations. Otherwise, you start turning your historic downtown into a strip like 27, and that's not what we want. That's 7-11s in historic downtown, and that's the worst thing you could do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Okay, any other comments?
Hey, everybody, I'm Margaret Dear. First of all, a historic district is defined by the state of Florida, and the boundaries are determined based on a historical survey of the buildings, and then you go from there. But the state and the Department of History and their archives are very specific as to how you go about determining what a recognized and acknowledged historic district is, and we've got discussion going on to try to get that established for the Town of Lake Placid for future planning. And then, I think that most of Ken LeBlanc's comments about parking and things like that, that there are differences in ordinances for historic district areas and regular commercial zoning. But to get added to the wish list, as we talked about in the CRA workshop, I mentioned that there is no sidewalk access to the Lake Placid Historical Society Museum from Maine all the way down on either side. The sidewalk stops at the alley by the Masonic Lodge. Then it's all comers. You got to hit the pavement and walk down on either side. And we were told previously that that is a ripe project for the CRA. On the one side, and the Lake Placid Mural Society could speak better to that. The train mural is on Palladium Cabinetry, is that the building? Is up there, and that's private property, and it's a very steep hill. And I told you all that I get a coronary watching people crawl up that steep hill to get a picture, and that's what everybody does. But there isn't, somebody's going to tumble down right into the street. So, the other problem is that there's a fire hydrant on that corner as well, which would have to come into consideration. But then, there's absolutely nothing on the other side. So, please, if you could find it in your hearts and wisdom, to take a look and consider what might be done before somebody gets hurt. Thank you.
Okay. We'll make sure that's added to the list. Thank you. All right, any other comments?
I have a few things that, from input from elsewhere, the, a dog park, and a dog park, and then, you know, have shading and benches, and, and then I was thinking, as long as you're having benches in the dog park, maybe have them so you can play chess or checkers or dominoes and whatever. I don't know, would Johns Park be a candidate for that or not? Whatever, to, the, we'll put on the line item to do a dog park somewhere?
Add it to the list, sure.
And then, the, the, now, the tram, the squeeze that was at Lake Wales?
Yes, ma'am.
To maybe mirror, steal, whatever they did, and think about, put that on the list?
I believe their CRA did that, so I think that'd be a great idea. Put the possibility of a tram on the CRA list.
And, and that would help if they had stations to get on and off, to get people from the museum up to the downtown, because that's a little bit of a trek for older people. And then, I envision that this tram could be a mural, not a mural tour, but a on and off mural circuit. Let's see. I think everything else that I had, okay. Okay, that was, oh, and then, oh, so, so it was suggested, in addition to the signage in the downtown area, signage on Highway 27. And, okay, that was, those are my additions to the list.
I did check, look closely at that highway, of the signage on Highway 27 this week, because I mentioned, I didn't think it ever said downtown. It doesn't really say downtown. I believe it says business district, but what got my attention was there were so many signs. There were like four or five in a row, and I think maybe at some point, we should reevaluate the signage and possibly consolidate it into one sign that has arrows.
And then, I would envision not your usual highway sign, but something that is attractive and upscale.
Yes, to, to separate it from the usual FDOT sign, yes.
And I don't know what would be required from the state, but that is a, a state road, so we'd probably have to.
We tried to do that one time, and that's years ago, but we were turned down by the state.
And that's, that's, that's the one problem. And anything we do on 27, we'll have to get approval from DOT first.
That was a long time ago.
It's all, nothing, you know, nothing ventured, nothing gained. So, if we, if we don't come up with a plan and submit it, we'll never know. Okay? All right, anything else?
I, I would like to ask the staff, you guys are out going around, you probably see blight, different things that need to be repaired that maybe aren't, and maybe the word isn't repaired, but, but could really enhance the town. Is there things that you would like? Is there things that you would like to put on the list? So this isn't just, you're the public too, and you're probably closer to a lot, seeing a lot of the things that we could use some priorities with some funds to make Lake Placid a lot more beautiful.
Alan Kiefer, Public Works Director. One thing that comes up a lot is the lack of lighting, I would say, on Main Street and Interlake during parades. We were, it would be good, they had mentioned putting different banners or potentially flowers on the street lamps, but those are not designed to hold anything. They don't have flagpole holders, at least not the ones on Main Street don't. So a different style of decorative lighting, something that reflects down to the road instead of just out in every direction, would be something worth looking at. Possibly lighting through the trees, maybe some kind of wire running down Main Street, something a little more decorative could be done as well. And long term, I wanted to potentially find a piece of property perhaps back here for a full-size playground structure and possibly a larger splash pad in that area, something more akin to what Okeechobee has. And then, again, it just depends on what the land is gonna be used for. But the, the property there off of Hillcrest behind Burt Harris's office, that's a long, narrow strip that could be loaded with plant life, foliage, and you could make a walk path through there with exercise equipment along the way. That could be a place for a dog park. Those are just some ideas that I've had, but just haven't found funding for or brought up for land usage. That's all I have.
Mark Schneider, Chief of Police. One thing that I would look at is crosswalks on Main Street between Interlake and Dow Hall. Currently, we have one marked crosswalk, and that is actually at the intersection of Main and Interlake. I believe they're working on one at Dow Hall, but you also have Park and, or Park and Bellevue in between. That's a lot of territory where people have no marked crosswalks, no dedicated path across that road. I would look at that.
To follow up on those two comments, I will say that when we really looked at the lighting, the lighting along Interlake and Dow Hall is too high. It's actually for traffic, it's not for pedestrian traffic. So if you look, if you go to Sebring and you look at around the circle, those lights are lower. So we have our lights up like streetlights, but for pedestrian traffic, they should be halfway down, really. I mean, it's about that. And I had thought about maybe cutting them off and lowering them, I don't know. I don't know what the answer to that one is. But the other thing is, is that I have a marked crossing in front of my place. And I'm telling you, I think that me and my little dog, I think one time I pick her up, because I had somebody that actually speeded up like they were gonna hit us. Like, they don't slow down. And I had asked for years to put one of those signs up. You know, it's against the law. The pedestrians have the right of way. And if you just did it at my intersection where you're coming into town and say, just like they do on the coast, it's a fine if you don't respect people crossing the road. We invite people for the murals, but then we run them over because we won't even let them across the street. And it's, it's the law that says you have to respect pedestrians. You have to let them across the street. So, I mean, if we just had one sign like where my place is, I'm not just saying my place, but I'm just saying coming into town that says, it's a fine. If you don't stop for pedestrians, it's a fine. That sets the tone for the downtown area that you do have to respect. That we have a vibrant downtown, we have mural people, we have people walking around. And it's against the law not to give the yield to them. I think that's very important. But the whole lighting thing is that the lights are just too high. They're not for pedestrians. And if you look, go to Sebring and you look at the height of their lights, you will see the difference. I don't know how to correct it.
Deborah, I did a lighting survey while you were on hiatus from the board. And I was cleaning my papers up the other day and I actually did find the readings. And while they were consistent across the board, I felt like they were too low. The light readings were too low. But it's possible that we might be able to change the fixture and not have to lower the light. We might just be able to change the fixture and redirect the lighting that's there and get more of it to go to the ground rather than losing it up in the trees. And the trees on Interlake by the school there and, and by your, your house and east of your house, those trees have not been trimmed yet, so we're losing some of the light into those trees, but-
Well, they've been trimmed now. Harry saw it on, he was really working hard on it.
I know, I know, they're, they're doing a great job. But I think it's, possibly we could just look at a different fixture that would redirect the light without having to go into something crazy.
Could I follow up on some of that?
Sure.
To Ken's amazement, I'll probably agree with Ken on several things. First of all, our fixtures could be changed out to shine light down. Many of them already have holders for flags along Interlake. We, the chamber's done that for years in the past, mainly American flags, Fourth of July. But the holders are there, all we need to do is buy more flags to go on them. Interesting to hear discussion of we need more light. The discussion when we put those light poles up decades ago was, they're too bright. I can't see one I'm driving down the road. So it, it's interesting to see the discussion full circle. Flowers, the chamber's done flowers in the triangles and at the intersections and the planters in the past. And Ken is right again, the issue is maintenance. And is Pam Fincher's here? I thought I saw her coming. Her, I've seen Pam and her mother butt up, face down, pulling weeds so many times in those. But, but Ken's right, you better budget for maintenance, whether they're in flower pots or planted in the ground. And, and that was the prohibiting. You know, years ago, this community just didn't have the funds for that. And we were kinda doing the best we could. And I'm glad to see discussions of transitioning to maintenance, because that was always the Achilles heel.
Okay, any other comments?
Since there was discussion about the lights, which I agree the lights are too high, but I wonder if there's a cap you can order for those lights that is reflective and shines down? You know, I've seen lights before just like those that have a top to them. So maybe the cheap solution is if it does exist, and it may not. But if it exists, maybe we just buy reflective caps and they get stuck on the top of those lights or glued or something, I don't know how they would do it. If it exists, might be the easy way to, to deal with the lighting situations. I really, you know, we gotta step into things. We can't afford to replace all the light poles and fixtures. But, you know, maybe there's caps, if there's not caps, maybe there's different light fixtures on those poles and, and so on, so.
There are actually globes that focus it toward the street or away from the street, and then there's globes with the caps-
Yeah, if it goes straight down, that would be a big, a big help. And, and the comment about maybe the strip behind Burt Harris's office, and Burt, don't kill me, you might not like this idea, but about maybe a good place for a dog park. You know, it might actually be a great place for a dog park. And I think you had commented on like a trail around that dog park where you have all that exercise equipment, because I've heard that from several people. And, and a dog park is really a good placeholder also. You could cheaply put a dog park in a day and in 10 years from now, you could rip it out and put a fire station if you wanted to, and you didn't lose a lot of money, you know? So, but we've already gone down that path, you know, and the police station, it's not gonna go there. So, but I also think as we talk about this property here and what we could do in this property, I think this property is limited, so you really need to think about master planning this property out. What are all the things you, you have in here now, but you're talking about putting in and you may need in the future? Because, you know, the town is growing, and as it grows, you might need a new utility department or this or that. So I think we need to master plan as we think about what goes on this property to make sure we don't, you know, put things on this property that then we don't have the room to do something else that we have to do in the future, because it is a limited property. But it is a great property, you know? And you got parking here and everything that maybe you don't have to repeat for some of the other things you wanna put here. And some other things could be placeholders too, you know? So anyways, it's not-
Twice in one night, I'll agree with Ken, the dog park behind my office would be great, as long as you put more landscaping in it. And quite frankly, I do appreciate the concept of the dog park at Johns Park, but the Smoke family gave that to the town and it's restricted pretty much to say, leave it like it is. There's a long story, I'm not bored public with it right now.
Did not realize, I thought it was town property.
Understand.
And too small for a dog park, but yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, any other comments come before the CRA? Saying none, I'll now adjourn this CRA meeting. All right, being 6:31, I'll now call to order the, the regular meeting of the Lake Placid Town Council this 10th day of June 2024 in the government center of the Town of Lake Placid. We've already had the invocation, but we'll have a roll call, please.
Mayor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Councilmember Worley?
Here.
Councilmember Charles?
Here.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Here.
All right, we'll go into Consent Agenda 1, A through F.
I make a motion, we approve Consent Agenda 1.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any comments from the podium? Saying none, we'll take it to the audience. Okay, saying none, go ahead, poll the council, please.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Okay, number two, under Presentations, we have Representative here from the chamber. If she would like to come forward, Purdy, please. She's got a request for fee waivers and road closure for the Caladium Festival coming up, what, the end of July?
The 26th through the 28th. Jennifer Bush, by the way, Chamber Director. We are just, this is our 33rd annual festival. We look forward to seeing everybody who's here, there. We see about 25,000 people every year. And so we are just asking, and continued, the continued cooperation from the town. We appreciate all of you and the service that we get from the town and the town employees, the sheriffs and the, the Lake Placid Police Department. We appreciate all of that.
Yeah, okay, I'll bring her back to council. Need a motion and a second on the fee wa, fee waiver, ah, fee waivers and road closure for the Caladium Festival.
Make a motion to approve the fee waivers and road closure.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, and comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Bring her back to the clerk, go ahead and poll the council, please.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Yeah, this is always a great event and we sure look forward to seeing everybody come into town for it. All right, second is Ladies with Purpose. They have a request on fee waiver and road closure. I believe it's the, at the same time. I don't know if there's anybody here or not for them that would like to speak. Please state your name for the record.
Tia Hobbs.
Say it so she can hear it, please.
Tia Hobbs.
Okay, thank you.
So, the purpose of it, and it is during the same time as the Caladium Festival down by the Journal. It's just because it is something new that is presented to Lake Placid. We're just trying to get the foot traffic until we get up and running and established. So we have asked that it be during the same time. It's about a four-hour event on that Saturday, so it's not the entire weekend.
And where are you talking about?
It's in the area of the Journal.
Oh, the area of the Journal, okay. And when you're, you're talking road closure, what, what are we looking at?
So we're looking at the southbound area. I'm not sure where the, I don't have the paperwork, but it would be the southbound area of Main Street up until the road that is a little bit down from Sconies. So it's a small area.
The actual road closure would be Main Street southbound from Dow Hall to Bellevue. It would be one block only southbound.
Okay, I see the map now. Okay?
And what day would that be, or multiple days?
Just the 27th.
It's the Saturday of the Caladium Festival.
And what is your organization?
So we're just a group of ladies, we call ourselves Ladies with Purpose. So it's five of us.
Are you, are you a nonprofit group?
No, we're not.
So you're like a, a social group?
Correct.
Okay. And so it's closing Main Street, just so I can understand here, because I, so it's closing Main Street and you would reroute the traffic over, what, down? Maybe I can look at this a different way.
From Dow Hall, we'd come down Pine to, to East Bellevue and then west to Main Street and then south.
And then the closure for the Caladium Festival is a block over, right?
No, it's several blocks down from the traffic light, traffic light east. Three blocks, four blocks, something like that?
For the Caladium Festival, the road closure would be from Interlake. It would include Park and Bellevue would be the alternate for that as well. The traffic would come down Oak to Bellevue and then down Bellevue to Main. So it would fall in line with what is actually the road closure for the Caladium Festival.
I'm trying to envision what, what's going to be on the street there? Is this gonna be vendors, is it gonna be food trucks, or what, what's gonna be on that street?
Correct, it will be the traffic, vendors and food trucks, yes.
Vendors and food trucks? That might-
So the, the street itself would probably hold the food trucks, but the vendors would be on the property of the Journal. The smaller vendors would be on the property of the Journal. So, for example, we would have a prayer booth that would be actually set up on the property of the Journal, but we would have a food truck that would be set up on the road.
And Ken, I assume you are on board with this?
So I would question to Jennifer Bush, what's the, the food trucks that would be there versus the food trucks that are with the Caladium Festival versus nonprofit food vendors in the Caladium Festival like the Rotary Club?
But they're not nonprofit, they're not a group. They would have to, I don't know who would sign for the liability issues with the town contract. I don't know how that would all work. I guess that would be up to our town attorney.
You're talking about the food truck? The, the food truck, Deborah, that's what you're talking about?
I'm just saying about this group's not a group as far as a nonprofit. They're not organized. Somebody has to sign a liability, I think. I mean, it would be up to, I mean, our town attorney needs to weigh in on this at the end of the day. Like, a loose group comes in and they have to be responsible for certain things. So I, I, I mean, all the years I've been, I've never had a, like, no, a non-organization come in and close roads and that. Usually it's a, a group, like, it's organized and there's a, somebody be responsible as far as the insurance and that. I, I don't know.
So if we needed to provide a actual business?
No, I, I don't know, I don't know. It's up to our town attorney, we just never, I don't, I've never had this happen before, where a group of people- No, I, I don't know. I don't know. It's up to our town attorney. We just never, I don't, I've never had this happen before where a group of people come in and they want to do-
I'm giving you an alternative. So if we had to provide a business to sign for us that had liability insurance, I could do that because my husband does own a business here in Lake Placid.
Well, I'm just asking for guidance.
Yeah.
I'd say let's pull the file because we had this discussion come up on closing the road for the farmer's market, I believe, wasn't it, Ken?
Yes.
And we had insurance. There was quite a discussion and list of if we're going to close the road, here's what we'll need to do. I would assume, well, council can certainly change their minds, but the starting point would be to look at the list we developed last time. I would rather not try to craft that decision. Sitting here today, I would suggest you refer it back to staff and have your police chief involved with the discussion.
Just to bring up one issue that has been brought up to me already by my command staff. When, when I initially looked at this, I wasn't thinking about the parking issue for the Caladium Fest and trying to get the vehicles out for the road closure. I believe that's going to probably wind up being a logistical nightmare to get the people actually out for the road closure. They're going to be parked there for the festival. I can't see us actually shutting down an entire block of parking from the Caladium Festival. And it may cause issue trying to get the people that are actually parked there out to shut the road. So i- it's going to become a problem. I'm not even sure if I'll have the manpower to be able to accomplish that.
I mean, I know that already because, you know, I live and work where I am and typically with the Caladium Festival, it goes, the parking goes all the way out to twenty-seven.
Yes.
I mean, on both sides of the road and shutting down another road during that time, I think would create chaos as far as I'm concerned. It's not that you're, you're not, you're having a wonderful event, but there's a huge event going on that's already taxing the roads as far as I can see. I mean, I, I call it in, like, okay, they're already up to my place. Now they're already down to twenty-seven, you know? I mean, that's how, it's already jammed up right now for the Caladium Festival and literally thank God, that was such a wonderful event for our town, but I just don't. Maybe you could do another event, another time, you know, but I'm, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it. I'm just saying that I just don't see how it's going to fit into what we already have going on. I just don't see how it can fit with the traffic. I mean, I live down there, so I see what goes on.
The other question I got, what about the other businesses south of you, Ken? The restaurant and those along there? This is going to impact them greatly. Have they given you any comments on? Okay. I think that those are other things we'll have to take into consideration.
Could, could your event be done at the Plaza without shutting down the road? I think the timing of the Caladium Festival with all of the activity is the concern of shutting down another road for a number of reasons. And I know we want to hear from Jennifer about food trucks because I, I, you know, you don't want competing things going on with the Caladium Festival, but you want to take advantage of the crowd coming in, you know, for your group. So I think the, the biggest heartburn you're going to see is closing a road down. And then I want to hear from the Caladium Festival, is there any concerns that they may have with other groups starting to do some things? Probably not, but unless it's food trucks are coming in over there, which is going to take from different areas.
Yeah, so I can let her speak to that.
Yeah, because, and it's not clear to me, so the road, so if the, it's the whole logistics, if the road closes down, what are you doing in the road? Is it people in the road or is it, was the food trucks in the road? Is it tents were going to be set up in the road? So what was the plan of utilizing the road for the need to shut it down?
So my first answer to your first question was, I did speak to the director herself to make sure that she didn't feel like there was any competition between, but she can also answer that question as well. But we did try to cover our bases. Yes, the food trucks would be in the road, so people would be able to utilize them, so they would be back and forth between the Plaza and the food trucks. So as far as the businesses are concerned, those people still are, would be able to utilize the businesses that are there and were able to bring in, because even though we have offered to have this in Lake Placid, we're trying to make this a countywide Christian block party. So we're trying to involve other churches between Avon Park, Stevren and Lake Placid to invite their, what do you call, um,
Congregation.
Their congregation to the event as well. So that means more people would be available, not only for our event, those businesses, but also the country fair if they want, a Caladium Festival if they wanted to participate.
So do you think the draw to your group is because of the food trucks? That I'm, again, I'm, I'm still trying to work through is have your event at the Journal Plaza, not close down the road, take advantage of the-
The draw wouldn't be the food trucks themselves, no. But it was, it is a way for us to bring money into having that event. And so besides just, you know, the road closure itself, you know, we have to be able to put up whatever we're trying to do for entertainment. So that was just a part of to help mitigate some of the fees.
Just as an aside, I recall that a Rotary Club that I'm, that I'm with, Lake Placid Morning Rotary, paired up with Wet Dogs last year in an after the festival party at, at the area that, that you're talking about in the middle of the Journal Plaza, and it was quite successful for both us and, and Wet Dogs. And I believe that Michael Noel is planning on having a band that night. And I also heard that Mordi and Ednas was having, it's their anniversary and they too were having a DJ or a band or some sort of a function. So that wouldn't affect you in the beginning at the, like, we're supposed to go, start at two o'clock, I believe. But as the night wore on, by the time we get to six, I think there's going to be a little crossover with some of those functions. And I would still like to hear from Jennifer about the food trucks because that's always been an issue from Rotary too. The food trucks.
So we have all the nonprofits that will be in Stewart Park as they always have been. And thankfully this year, our chief decided to close off an extended portion of Park Avenue, bringing it closer to the chamber office. We have four food trucks that will utilize that area. That is all that I have is four food trucks in that area, and that's on Park next to the chamber office. So that will keep them away from Stewart Park and we vet them all to make sure that they're not competing in food with what we already have, so that we give a good variety and we also make sure our nonprofits are doing well in Stewart Park. Yes, when we spoke originally and she called me, I, she actually talked about joining the Caladium Festival and bringing her event in with ours. Right now, we're tapped out at a hundred and sixty vendors and I think we're taking up all of the real estate for the area that we have closed, Stewart Park and Interlake Boulevard, so I wouldn't have any ability to add her event to my event, which then she said she could go to Journal Plaza and do it at Journal Plaza. My concern is the road closure is from one to seven. On Saturday, we will have two buses that pull out of the Women's Club on Main Avenue and they'll go up to Dow Hall Boulevard, turn east on Dow Hall and head back out on twenty-seven. I just need to make sure that we're not going to have, we have two buses, one at one o'clock and one at two o'clock. And as long as we don't have any issues with those buses taking off out of the Women's Club, we don't have a problem with it.
Okay. I'm, I'm confused. You said the road closure was from one to seven?
That's the timeframe, so.
I thought you said four hours.
The event is four hours, but they request for the road closure to be an hour before and an hour after.
Okay, yeah, I was going to ask that question, so. And have you talked to the police chief about? Chief, do we have-
We've discussed it a, a couple of different times. At the time when they initially put in the event closure, we had less officers requested for the Caladium Festival. Since then, there's been a request for traffic control, for pedestrian traffic between the Mural Society and their tour buses, as well as pedestrian traffic at Interlake and Main. They would like to have an officer there. So I've had to commit two more officers to the Caladium Festival that I did not have committed initially. With the additional manpower at the Caladium Festival, I do not know if I will have enough to facilitate a road closure on Main for this event as well.
Yeah, that's, that was going to be one of, one of my major concerns, how, if you were going to be tapped out or not.
So at what point- We weren't at the onset, but like I said, the chamber has asked for additional personnel for that.
So my question would be, at what point could he find that out? Because he's not saying he doesn't, he just doesn't know at this point.
Well, that's, yeah.
Mayor, if I may, I don't know, two, two statements or comments. We would need insurance. We're currently back and forth in the middle of a lawsuit from somebody that fell during the Caladium Festival last year. And so it's back and forth between the chamber's insurance and the city's insurance, so it would need a town of Lake Placid additionally insured insurance policy for the road closure. Possibly an option is, because I believe at the Christmas market, the food trucks were all sets, set up in the parking spaces, so they're, you served off of the sidewalk area. And then you're not having to close the road because they're not doing anything on the roadside, just as an option possibly that you could still block that off and not be not close the road and still have your food trucks. I don't know if that's an option. If anybody has any comments, I just, that's top of my head.
To facilitate that, we would have to actually shut those parking spaces down and mark them off the morning of and try to prevent people from parking all day in those spaces. If you allow parking there, I cannot guarantee that we can get those cars out.
I see it like this, and I've lived different places, Gasparilla, Guavoline over in Tampa. There's an agreement with the people that put on those events. They've done it for a bazillion years and they are allowed the latitude to decide the vendors they have, the road closures for that day on both of those events in respect to them, because they have done it. I'm, how many years now, Jennifer? Okay, so it's easy if you create this wonderful event and then everybody wants to come along and kind of not saying this you're doing, but tag on to it. So there's protection for the people that have done this for a bazillion years. And what I don't understand is why don't you just choose a different day when there's not going to be traffic problems and all that? We need more events downtown. That's what we're trying to achieve here. We want more events downtown, just do it a different day. When it's not going to cause traffic problems, it's not going to cause issues with the, the way it's been set up for over thirty years. And then that makes us get more people downtown and another event. I think that's fabulous. But not to do it the day that this other event has done it for years and years. And this has been kind of the way it's always been. And it's the way in big cities like Gasparilla and that, there's some protection for the event holders, so they have some kind of control over the area that they have control over because they're responsible for it. And they have to make do with it and they have to do the traffic and they have to do that. But I think it's a great idea, just do it a different day.
So what you are presenting is the option? And it's not an option that has not been thought of?
Well, I don't know because I still say that, you know, we've never had anybody come up here with no organization.
Answer? It is an option. We have, again, talked to the director who says, at least when she talked to me, it did not feel like or was presented as a competition. And just as the Caladium Festival or the Country Fair, it started from day one. And that's all we're doing is presenting a new option, starting from day one, that could be a thirty-three-year event held in Lake Placid. But with the foot traffic until we are known and established, that's what we were doing, not necessarily piggybacking off anyone, but it does allow the foot traffic to come back and forth between the events. And just as she stated, or I'm sorry, just as the sheriff stated, captain, chief, sorry, I'm gonna get it right. The chief stated, it is the same route. We're only closing off a portion, that block on the southbound. She still has the same route for her bus, travel bus to be able to get to where they need to. So again, there's no hindrance.
But you're trying to do it at the same day we already have an event.
That is correct.
And we, I'm saying, do it a different day. Do it a different day, create us a new event. That would be fabulous. I'm so excited about that. That's what we're trying to get, but don't do it the day that we already have an event. We already have a good event. Do it another day. Show yourselves out. Do a big event on another day. That's fabulous.
I understand what you're saying, Ms. Worley. I'm not sure if you're saying we as the board. I'm just understanding that you have presented the option for us to do it a different day. We are here to try to do it on this particular day. I'm not trying to argue with any of the, the board members. We have presented, you know, the expected, expected route. He has not stated that he does not have the police profile or members to be able to do it at this time. It's just a possibility. Possibility does not say yes or no.
And I'm not talking for, I'm not talking for the other council members. They all have their very strong opinions. I can guarantee you that. So I'm talking about, I think, we, the people, the people that I talk to, the people that I represent want more events downtown. They want more things to do. These are the people that live in Lake Placid. That they love it. They want more things to do. So that's who I say we, me, the people, not these good people up here that have very strong opinions of their own.
And I definitely agree because I am a citizen of Lake Placid. I've been here for over twenty years and so have the, the girls that are with me. They've been, they are born and raised here. And so we are very, very well, well, that we want more events to happen, but it's just a way to get established. We can always, this is not a permanent day set and so to happen every year. Again, we're just trying to get the foot traffic, so we are know, we, we can present it to the people. We can have people out there in order to know what it's about, see the goodness in it, and then be able to move around throughout Lake Placid. Because then we're, you know, we're established. Again, they'll know what it's about, they know what they're coming to. And this can be moved to a different timeframe, but as of today, we're trying to do it on the twenty-seventh of July.
May I inquire, you tried to pass the ball to me a moment ago. Tell me again why you want to close the road?
So the road closure is mainly because of the food trucks that would be involved.
How many food trucks?
We don't have any established number at this time.
So if we find another place for food trucks, we wouldn't need to close the road, correct?
That is correct. Or if we're able to close off that parking area, then no, we wouldn't need to.
Because, I, I mean, I hate to see us close a road in such an already congested time. If we, and I'm going to restate, I'd come back and let staff work on finding a place with the chamber, be at the county parking lot across from Kenny LeBlanc to put a few, few trucks. Chief, would that work?
Again, if we're, if we're going to close it for that, we would have to close it that morning. Once the Caladium Festival traffic starts parking, actually getting them out and shutting it down is going to be very difficult.
Oh, I totally agree, but I, I, it seems to me that it would be easier to, e- either case, you're going to lose-
It is definitely easier to close a parking lot off than it is to close a road in the middle of the day, yes.
And a day or two in advance, she should know how many food trucks or how many spots you need to reserve. You will, you will lose that, we will lose that many spots, but we don't need to also lose a road, was my point.
Yes, I, I appreciate, that's actually a great idea. Depending on the number of food trucks, it would be directly across the street. My recommendation for that, you would still need assistance with traffic control as that is
Sure.
a main artery through there. And to have that much foot traffic crossing the street there may become an issue.
I know that in previous years, recent previous years, Jennifer can attest that at least our, some of our nonprofits that have food vendors for the, for the Caladium Festival are upset with the food trucks because they take a lot of our business. And we are there to raise money for our particular projects throughout the year. And when the food trucks come, like we serve, our Lake Placid Rotary serves hamburgers, and when a food truck comes and serves hamburgers, it is definitely a kick on our sales for that particular day. So that's why we've been very careful and tried to work with Jennifer and trying to get the food trucks that come that don't serve exactly the same things that we're serving with our, for our nonprofits. And there's, what, Jennifer, four or five of us that serve food? I know there's hot dogs, and there's barbecue, and there's fish, and there's hamburgers. And these are all food vendors that we do, that we all volunteer and raise money for our project. So that would be an issue. I think, Chief, if you could try to explain a little clearer why you can't exactly say whether you would have officers or not, that you'll be using some reserves, is that the case?
Yes, we would have to, we would have to use reserve. Right now, all my full-time officers are committed. So I would have to go to reserve. A lot of them hold full-time jobs and cannot come in on those days. That's why we've relied so heavily on the full-time for this Caladium Festival. And again, when the initial request came in, I had the additional officers to be able to contribute. But then additional requests from the Caladium Festival came in for officers for traffic control. I had to reallocate what I would have been able to do this with to the traffic control since the Caladium Festival was, took precedence. It takes precedence on those days. So I reallocated those officers to that. I have put it out. I have not heard back from any reserve officers who would be willing to work at this time. Again, that would be something I would have to wait to see if they could. I cannot order them to quit their full-time jobs to come here and do this.
Thank you for that clarification.
Just to clarify, why we have asked for additional traffic control, this will be the first year that we actually have trains running and buses. Last year, we just had a two-day festival, and we had the trains. And that caused a lot of traffic coming across from the Women's Club area, Stewart Park area, going to the trains. This year, we will have buses going out to the field and the trains running on Friday and Saturday as well. So after our committee meeting, we felt like there, we needed more presence to get people safely across the street to the trains and vice versa. The trains come in, they bring their own following. There's a following of train people. They will come strictly for the train. And then when they get off the train, they're like, oh, there's a festival. And then they come to the festival, or vice versa. The people who have bought tickets to get on the trains that are now part of the festival as well. So this is the reason we did that, is because we'll actually have both things happening at the same time.
And just to point out, for traffic control there, since it is divided, you will need one for the northbound, one for the southbound for the traffic control there. You can also not leave a person for eight hours directing traffic in the heat at that time of year. So I have to have alternates to fill in for them as well, to give them breaks so that they can get water and get out of the sun. So it's going to take four officers to do that area.
I don't think that there's quite understanding. I'm sure, do you live in the town of Lake Placid?
Yes, I do.
You do? Okay, so you know that we're only 2,400 people. We're tiny, and we have a tiny police department. I don't know, the sheriff's office has 100,000 people, and they have a really big sheriff's office. That's why the difference in why we don't have officers. We're only 2,400 people. We don't have a big staff, like the sheriff's office is for the county, which is 100,000 people. That's the difference.
Okay, well, my thoughts are, we have the problem with the police staffing. There's the traffic congestion. And you don't know how many, or food trucks you have, which tells me you don't know what the food trucks are going to be and whether or not they're going to be competing with the nonprofits. So I am not in favor on this day.
Well, we definitely haven't put anything in stone. So we wouldn't commit to something if we don't know whether the road will be closed or not. If it was an issue with what they were serving, then definitely the director could have gotten with me, or I can get with her, far as what would be served. But I'm not going to put something in stone for someone until I know what is happening here today. So I can't present to you anything when it comes to what food trucks and how many. Of course, for that area, we couldn't fix six to eight food trucks. I mean, the trucks, the trailers are large. So we're looking at three to four at max.
And that's to allow you, it's going to be like a fundraiser then, right? So you'll make the profit off the food trucks?
So it will be, so if there was profit, yes. It's mainly to pay for any setup, tables, tents that we would need for the event, yes.
That will all be over at the Journal Plaza?
That will be, yes.
Any other questions or concerns?
What about setting up a scout house?
Yeah, I mean, my thought is similar to the others is, I think another day would be the best. Or, I'm not supportive of closing a street. So either another day, which could allow more activity for the town, or to try to put it all at the Journal Plaza to accommodate, you know, you know what your goals are, and not close down a street.
Maybe if it were another day, you could utilize Stewart Park and utilize the whole park? I don't know. Maybe it's, you know, I don't know what the schedule is for that or how you do that, but it might be a thought.
Well, I think we need a motion and a second.
With reference to the road closure, is that the, is that the item?
Yeah, to allow them to hold the event and road closure.
All right, that's two things. Whether you're going to, oops, I'm sure I've gone too far here. So it appears that the agenda item says, "First Annual Christian Block Party Road Closure Request for Fee Waiver." So I guess the motion would be to deny the road closure request for fee waiver due to the conflict with the other events going on in town that day and possible lack of law enforcement coverage to handle the event? Is that kind of what you're looking for? Prickets, hello?
Help here.
Are you making the motion, or?
Yeah, she made it.
I'm looking for the wording of the motion. It is to make it, the intent of the council is to deny the road closure request and fee waiver for the First Annual Christian Block Party.
I'll second.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the podium? Okay, we'll take it to the audience.
I have a question.
Yeah, this is the time.
I'm with her. So if we change the date, do we still have to come present it to the council?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So it's not a problem that we have the event, we just want it on a different date?
Right.
Okay. So, and the paperwork has to be redone if we change the date? Okay. Okay.
All right, we got our motion and a second. I'll ask the clerk to poll the council.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
All right.
Good evening, guys. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I want to, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, there it is. All right, next is 2C, Lake June Pontoon Rental Fuel Tank.
Hi, good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed town officials, thank you guys so much for the opportunity to speak with you. I do want to apologize for my cap wearing indoors, especially at a government center. I just had some recent skin cancer removed on my head, and it's a little embarrassing because I've got a comb over going on. So, but thank you very much for having me and giving me the opportunity to speak with you. I'm here to discuss an important proposal that impacts not only beautiful Lake June, but also the well-being of our entire community. Lake June is a cherished resource for locals, part-time residents, and tourists alike. It's home to approximately 538 vessels stored in boathouses by private residents without accessible trailers on site. Currently, many of these boat owners fuel their vessels directly in the water, often using unregulated gas storage and improper gas cans. This practice poses significant environmental risks as it frequently results in spillage and contamination of our precious lake. Without accessibility comes negligence, and this negligence threatens the health of our lake and its ecosystem. To address these concerns, I propose installation of external double-walled, above-ground gas tanks at Lake June. This facility would provide a regulated and monitored fueling option, dramatically reducing the likelihood of fuel spills and protecting the health of our lake. By offering a safer, more convenient alternative, we can mitigate the risks associated with unregulated fueling practices. Our commitment to this initiative extends beyond simply installing the tank. We will secure all necessary licenses and permits, develop a comprehensive spill plan, ensure regulated storage, and comply with all state and federal laws. Our goal is to promote the overwellness of Lake June through environmentally conscious practices. Moreover, this proposal offers significant benefits to our community. For the elderly who struggle with carrying fuel, for tourists looking to enjoy our lake with their personal vessels, the ability of regulated fuel access adds an attractive amenity. It enhances convenience and supports local tourism, contributing positively to our economy. Lake June is not only a cherished resource, but also a focal point of our community's development. A recent tourism and development presentation at the county highlighted the need for more lake accessibility, including the availability of fuel. This underscores the broader community and economic benefits that our proposal can bring. I am pleased to report that our proposal has garnered support from various stakeholders, several residents, and environmental activists. Their backing underscores the community's recognition of the importance of this initiative. Today, I seek your guidance on the next steps to engage with county officials and formally present our proposal. We are eager to collaborate and work towards implementing this improvement that will benefit our park and ensure the continued well-being of Lake June's natural surroundings. Thank you for your attention and consideration. Together, we can make a significant impact on our community, and most importantly to me, preserve the natural beauty of Lake June for generations to come.
Just to make a couple of comments, since I actually asked Kristin to come make this presentation to us. It's going to come to the county. They have to advertise. We own the park, we lease the park. For those that you haven't been around coming to Lake June as long as I have, there used to be fuel at the park. Underground tanks years ago. We used to fill our boats there, pull over. We didn't have to fill with five-gallon gas cans, which I do now. And I'm one of those people that invariably seem to spill some of it into the lake. And so I think it would be a great project personally. And so I asked her to ask the council for support. Since we own the park, we lease it to the county, but I thought it might help for her project of trying to get gas into the park, so.
Yeah, I don't know when it was, but, I don't know how many of you remember, but there used to be a bait station and gas tanks there. I can't even tell you when it closed. But it was there, and it was, it was a valuable asset at that time. So just wanted everybody to know that.
Yeah, this issue came up years ago. And for whatever reason, I think that they wanted to use the little house there to sell sandwiches or something. Somehow, the wheels fell off. But you would be shocked at how many people came out in favor of this. We have a lot of elderly. They have a lot of pontoon boats. They cannot get fuel into their pontoon boats to enjoy the lake. So what does happen is a disaster. People walking out there trying to put gas in their sea dews or whatever, wave runners or whatever. I am totally in favor of this. I think done properly, and obviously, the state's going to make it be done properly, that we should be in full support of this just for the preservation of the lake and also for the well-being of our elderly. And just in general, it's just a good idea. I mean, I can't think of a better idea for our lake.
We all, I just wanted to make a real quick comment, too. This is really important to me. I am an environmental asset, sorry, I can't even talk today, advocate for the environment and do the Lake Placid cleanup. So this is really important for me environmentally. That's really why I've decided to propose it. We also would implement a line-of-sight fueling plan, which essentially means we fuel that boat, or we're directly in the line of sight for that person. So it would not be a, they come up, swipe their card, fuel their own boat. It would have to be within line of sight.
And I'm sure I missed it, I'm sure you said it, but what is the size of the tank you're proposing? And was, is there containment?
So what we're proposing is, we looked at some of the issues in the previous, with the previous discussion. It was underground. We don't want to have an underground tank. So we're proposing to have two double-walled, 500-gallon tanks.
In containment?
And it would have a containment center, yes, correct. So it has to have a spillage containment. I don't know the exact measurements of it, but it's regulated per your tank size.
Oh, yeah, very regulated.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I agree. I think this is something that's been missing for years, is being able to fuel on the lake. So I totally support it. Where do you propose putting it over, at Bishop Park?
So I actually am proposing to have it by our small building. There's an area that is not accessed as much with the public, which if you're looking at the small building that we're in, it's right to the left of it. So, and there's also a walkway that's far enough away from that to sort of mitigate. And also, we would run the hose underneath the dock, but above the water. So it wouldn't be like a tripping hazard or in the way. Because we do not, we want to make the park, you know, as accessible, as enjoyable as possible. So it's really to add to that value and not to take away from anything.
So I understand, right now, you're just looking for a letter of support for the county?
Yes, sir. So we, I've made an informal proposal, per se, in the form of an email. I know that it's going to come up in the future, but I would like the support of the town, since the park is in the town, and I love the town.
And at that point, we could probably ask for a site plan just to see what your plans are, where it's going to go, and how things are going to be done. But I think this is a wonderful idea that probably should have happened many years ago. And I applaud you for what you've done so far and what you're continuing to do, so. I don't know if we need any more or not. Ask the council for-
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we ask the mayor and the town attorney to draft a letter on behalf of the town of Lake Placid to give to the, in support of this project, to the county. I'm sure that you all can find the words, appropriate words. Also, with our standing as the actual underlying owner of the park, that we go ahead and support this project. That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, we got our motion and a second. Any further discussion from the podium? All right, hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Okay, yes.
I'm Margaret Dear. It sounds super fantastic, but given that we own the property,
are there any built-in guarantees that will keep the county from putting that out for a contract so that we make sure that our own Lake Placid resident and key gets the contract? I mean, I see you shaking your head. I don't like that answer. I mean, it just seems unfair. I mean, we own it, and yes, we lease it to them, but I don't know. I'm going to pray that everybody sees the right thing. But I mean, these guys deserve it, and I, I mean, there should be some sort of guarantee. That's just my two cents.
I don't know if that would ever happen. I don't know what your... I'm sorry, I was stealing her notes so I could help use those in writing the letter. What was the question about? No, we've leased it to the county. It's their decision, period, full stop. Yep. I know 60 years at least.
You could write a letter of support if you want.
Absolutely.
It worked last time, so.
You can get a lot more signatures on that letter.
Words matter.
Okay, bring her back. Pull the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Where are we at? Here we go. Four A. Oh, wait a minute, we've got other people. Do you want to? Yeah, we'll bring these up first. I have a couple of people that like to talk. Marlene Berger? You what? Oh, okay, it's part, oh, oh, there's nothing on here. That's, okay. All right, so we'll wait. All right, then we'll go to four A, Resolution 2024-14, Heartland National Bank. I think this is just verbiage to clear up our agreement with the bank on how we're doing banking and so on.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2024-14, Heartland National Banking, as stated in the agenda.
Yeah, let me read it for the record. A resolution of the town council regarding town official banking with Heartland National Bank. There. Okay. All right, we have a motion.
Second, with the correction of the Scribner's error in the title. Do you mince your first?
I have to, I'm sorry, I can't make that motion. I'm sorry, because I'm a stockholder in Heartland National Bank, so I have to recuse myself from this whole item. So I have to withdraw that motion.
Okay. We'll reiterate the motion by Nell Hayes, councilperson Nell Hayes, and with the addition of the correcting the Scribner's error.
Second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second with the correction. Are there any other comments from the podium?
I just have some questions on just the process. Is, I understand that this is replacing Ray Royce to be a signature with Deborah Worley, but do we require two signatures on checks or just one? Two signatures. So two of the three would sign, or are there additional staff people that are authorized to sign? So just, okay. That's all. That was just a process question.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Take it to the audience. Bring it back. Pull the council.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
I have to not vote, and I will file the paperwork.
And Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Okay. Go to five A, number one, Drag Boat Racing Information.
I guess Kevin put it on with my name, is after the last meeting, I happened to see on the drag boats' website, Lake Placid is scheduled for the weekend after Labor Day. And I personally don't have issues with that. What I wanted to make sure is, you know, the communication that needs to be done with who, kind of the marketing. That's a good thing for the town to bring in people, you know, for drag boat races. But then it's going to be who's going to coordinate, because you've got, I know Kevin came to our homeowners' meeting in February and kind of described what was going to take place. And it could be up to 50 boats coming in, and they'll be displayed so people can come look at them. That means boats and trailers coming in. And then sometimes they set up bleachers, right, for people to viewing. So it's the, who's coordinating with the organization or the TDC to make sure that every, you know, we've got the proper police, you know, protection. And it's going to be pretty congested down there if it's going to bring in 1,000 people with food trucks, 50 trucks with boats on them. So that was why I thought we should put that up there, so that we can, one, make the town and the council aware that this is happening. You know, however it slipped through without us knowing it was going to happen, that's not my issue. It's happening. It's being advertised on their website and elsewhere. Then we need to plan for it.
Yes, and so to back up, as far as the council goes, it was brought to the council. All the park reservations are currently entirely in the purview of the town administrator. I did bring it to the council prior to, this is going back to February, I believe, to find out if anybody had any issues. The only issue raised was with Councilman Hayes, which I addressed with her after that. The Drag Boat Racing Group went to the TDC and approached them with the project they have. We're, they're not asking of anything at this point from the town as far as fee waivers or any of that. We haven't gotten to the details of the actual day of the event and planning with the group. I've had two or three meetings with the group, but we haven't gotten to the details of what they're doing, because they'll be providing most of, they need an ambulance on site. They need a rescue diver on site. Some of those things, how we handle parking. We have had a brief discussion with their city staff about how they handle that for the Fourth of July, when we close the ramps, and we have a lot of traffic. The park's on the flat area, which they'll still have that availability. And they are boats and trailers, because they only put their boats in, they put their boats in for the race, and they hit the race. It's a drag race. It's a short ramp, and it will be ending at the park. So, or close to the park, out in the water. It doesn't impact anybody from using their existing docks, other boats. They'll have an area buoyed out so that people can watch from their boats, which I anticipate a lot of Lake June residents will. And then they have observation from Lake June Park or Bishop Park, wherever, depending on what the draw is. TDC has approved a $19,000, approximately $19,000 grant to cover some of their expenses, and that's a, that money is not given all upfront. For anybody that knows the TDC operations, I just, I went to the meeting when they were presenting it. And so they have to prove their whole hotel stays, and based on that, they get their funding from the TDC. So as we get a little closer into July and August, we'll have a lot of the details fleshed out and work out parking and how many anticipation and where the rest of it goes. But we haven't got into it yet. We've been concentrating mainly on Caladium Festival and getting the things cleaned up and trees and things done we needed for the Caladium Festival. But if anybody has, that's it in a nutshell of the information I have to date. Okay, if there's no other questions, then we can move on to the next item.
Okay. Five A two, the TDC proposed multi-sports complex. This is just an update, I guess, Deborah.
Yeah, so I was appointed on last Tuesday to the Tourist Development Council. I did have a prior meeting with them as a kind of introduction meeting. And the people that were doing this, which are these people. And we do have this book that I can share. Okay, but really, if you want to find out up to date, now, it's called Synergy Sports. It's putting this on. And they did a great presentation at the county commission meeting, which you can go and watch online. You can skip through. I would suggest you do that, because I cannot begin to explain everything they went through, even at that meeting, and what I went through with them. But it is a new concept. I think that basically, the people that do this synergy, they're actuaries. They go strictly on data. They go strictly on numbers. They are focused on, you know, what will work as far as the numbers go. And it would be a joint partnership with private financing. It's an $80 million project, but it does seem with their presentation that this would work, because we are two hours from everywhere. If you've ever tried to order anything online, and they go like, oh, I said, no, I'm two hours from everywhere. And they go like, well, how far are you from Tampa? Two hours. How far are you from Miami? Two hours. I mean, you have to go through the speech with them every time. So we are two hours. So we're centrally located. And also, there's none of these regional sports. So, you know, in the beginning, I thought, well, we're putting in pickleball courts. So maybe we could, with our new pickleball courts and the other pickleball courts, we could maybe attract a tournament or something. No, they want them all in one place. So the regional and the tournament people want everything in one place. So this developer, Office 66, this landowner, has a vision that they want to donate the land for this multi-complex, because they plan on building hotels and auxiliary structures to take care of the people that come here to our county. But this is an effort to bring a lot of people to our county to spend money and go home so that we don't have the responsibility of taking care of them the rest of the year. Their big motive is, and when I first, well, the last time I was on the TDC, Jim Brantley was a great mentor, and he taught me about children. You can bring golfers. Most of them don't even bring their wives. But, I mean, that's great, and we have people come. But when you bring children, they bring their parents, their stepparents, their grandparents, you know, their aunts and uncles, or siblings. I mean, they bring this whole crowd with them, one little person. So the idea is to attract these tournaments, to bring all of these people to Highlands County to spend their money, and hopefully, I was talking to a business owner today, hopefully through the summer, where we, all our businesses die. And I don't know the far-reaching, but it's just going to be in the informational stages. So I just thought this was really important. I'm going to be reporting back to you what the TDC is doing, and also about like the boat racing. And there'll be a follow-up with that and what the results are. I'll bring that back to you. So I'm going to just, I think this is an important project for our town to keep track of. And if you wanted to watch that, the county commission meeting, they did do a good presentation and why they think that this will work. So anyway, I just thought I'd share that with you all.
What do they say next step is?
The county commission wasn't even allowed to kind of even, there's some kind of, as far as government goes, another rule. They couldn't really pass it for a proposal. They have to wait. It's going to have to go through. They kind of gave, they weren't allowed to say, yes, we approve this, or we want you to go forward. So they have to wait for another month or two to the First of July before they can even move forward to say, yes, we want you to do this proposal. So it's just in the process stages, and because of this new law, they're not allowed to even promote, you know, say, we want to pursue this until July 1st. But they obviously do want to see the, you know, progressively if there are new figures and that sort of thing. So it is moving forward. So I would see maybe the end of July, August, that they're going to have more information and maybe some actual proposals. But they have, the synergy group does have other projects going around the United States. There's, and watching those as well in the next month or two, seeing how those are going to be turning out. But it's very interesting, and it could make us the center, basically, we are the center of the state, make us the center for regional sports. What I was surprised about, and none of us down here heard, which, to your point, lacrosse has come to our county three times for tournaments or whatever. I guess it's the new football because of people not wanting their children to get head injuries. So lacrosse is coming on strong in the United States, just like soccer did. So they already had these people come back, and this is what they're saying. They're tired of Orlando. They're tired of the cities. They want, they're just tired of the traffic. They want to come where they can, you know, it's healthy. They want to come places healthy, you know, that projects that and get away from the traffic and get away from the city. So that's their whole point. But I'm just saying, we need to connect better. So if we knew lacrosse tournament's coming in Sebring, we need to tell our merchants. We need to give heads up, hey, lacrosse people, come on down here to Lake Placid. So I'm going to try to do that, but I was surprised. I mean, that was kind of shocking to me. So anyway, that's what I'm going to try to do and bring it back to you guys, and maybe we can somehow interact with the TDC in a better way, in a more effective way, and get our businesses healthier.
Excellent. I'm just going to add a couple of quick comments to that. I didn't sit through the county commission meeting on that, but I did sit through the TDC presentation on that. What they're proposing is to pull in the national tournaments and the large regional tournaments. The, this doesn't compete against, if you have eight pickleball courts, you're going to have, those are the local, those are the local people having that tournament. That's a local tournament, not a regional tournament. If you've been to Wild World of Sports and some of their tournaments, my kids played 3B3 soccer. We went, spent five years at Wild World of Sports at Disney up there during those tournaments. And there were baseball tournaments going on, and there's basketball tournaments going on, and there was indoor shooting one year going on. The competitions that they're talking about bringing these are on a national level, and it's not really a competition. Now, you may put a local Lake Placid team, travel team or something, into that tournament. But it's not really competing with what we use as our local Dixie League tournament or Little League tournament or soccer tournaments. Those are a local level. Those aren't hundreds of teams from all around the country and, or even all around Florida. So just a quick note on that.
Okay. Next is five, and I guess you'll bring back information as it's available.
Oh, yeah, that was my intent, and I just...
And I imagine at some point, they're going to want a letter of support from us or something, but which...
And we'll have a lot more information.
Yeah, and we'll have more information to be able to give it at that time.
And even if you know it's going to be on a future agenda at the county, let us know.
Okay, yeah.
Get more people up there to attend.
Sure, that'd be great. That'd be great. I'll say my other comment till the end. It was about the fire, new fire station. Yeah, going up there is an experience, because we did come up on another issue. So, yes, I definitely will tell you when things are coming up that will affect our area and our businesses.
Okay. Next is five D one, special town council meeting. I guess you want it for the end of this month?
Yeah, do you want me to go over the, so?
Yeah.
So typically, Rachel, they're all involved in their audit now. The final audit will be, documentation will be presented to you. Probably the last week in June, we'll give you a date for a special meeting. It'll be advertised, and the paper will be advertised on the website. And that meeting is usually the audits presented from the auditors. Any other comments? Nope. Then you move on down to, we're going to get ready to advertise for our budget workshops. I've given you some, well, actually, I jumped ahead, sorry. So at your regular town council meeting in July, you'll be presented with the estimate to base your proposed millage rate. That's a propose from the council that we work the budget with. Your idea is you don't, you can't raise it after you vote on this, but you can lower it come final, final, so you can start somewhere and bring it down. After that, we'll schedule the workshops. I give you a couple of options, three options. We're going to go ahead and advertise for three. Last year, we only advertised for two budget workshops. With new council, we'll go ahead and do the three choices between Wednesdays and Thursdays, so you can see the dates. If I can get an idea from everybody, if they're available either on all the Wednesdays, all the Thursdays, you know, just get an idea so we can advertise those. I usually advertise like...
I don't know about the others, but on Thursdays, I usually have commitments already. So if we could do it on Wednesdays, it would fit me better. I mean, I could change my plans, but... I mean, I could change my plans, but, but Wednesdays would be better for me on, instead of Thursdays.
And I'm just the opposite. I've got all Thursdays. The 15th is a little tricky, but I can work around it. But now, I could do Wednesdays, but I can't do 5:30. But I could do 6:00 or maybe even as late as 6:30. I just can't do 5:30. I can't make it here by 5:30.
So my conflict isn't a Wednesday or Thursday. Mine is that first week. I'm on vacation that first week, the July 31st, August. I don't know if that one could be pushed to the, the Monday after, whatever, first, second, you know, the, the 5th or something. But that's my conflict with any of the date. The other dates are all fine for me.
And I have trouble on Monday, too. Monday, again, I can't-
I was just saying into the next week. I didn't know which day. But I, the week, the first week of that, I'm off. I'm out of the state.
Well, my life's real boring, so I don't have any conflicts.
Same here. I'm good anytime.
Get a life, Deborah.
Like I say, I'm supposed to be gone August 15th, but if we, if we needed to meet on that day, I, I could work around that.
So Rachel, I came up with the dates. We're going to have to chime in. So we have one that's not available the first week, right? So the first workshop, Councilmember Charles is not-
Right, that last week of July, I'm-
Right. Can we move that one week earlier? We don't have time. We're trying to coordinate because we've got to give staff time to get those numbers right, you know, in there, so. So, and we could do a, maybe Tuesday? Anybody have issues with Tuesdays?
Tuesdays would be fine.
Tuesday's good.
The Tuesday before that first week? That's fine. So that would be, I'm sorry, I lost my place.
That'd be the third, that'd be July 30th?
No, that's the week I'm off. I'm off the last two weeks of July.
Oh, you're, oh, okay.
Last two weeks of July.
Actually, the whole month, but I'm, right after the town meeting, I'm gone in July. So it's like three weeks. That's why I was-
Well, August 5th is going to be an LPA meeting. We could do Tuesday, the 6th. We try to get it early on because we really do have to stay on that timeline for the first hearing and second adoption, so.
Right, that's what I figured.
So would you go to-
But we can move it to the s-
If you went to Tuesday, August the 6th, then would you follow up with Wednesday or Thursday, August 14th to 15th? You would get us back on that schedule that you proposed? Is that correct?
Yeah.
So you're saying August 6th? That's a Tuesday. Okay, how about August 6th, August 14th?
If it's 6 o'clock, I can do August 14th. I can't do it at 5:30.
I don't think later would hurt anything.
So we'll do a 6:00 PM. Are we, okay with 5:30 on the 6th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's a Tuesday, yes.
What was the next one? So the 28th? Are we all good with the 28th if it's 6?
Yeah.
Yes.
So let me just clarify, August 6th, 5:30. August 14th, 6:00 PM. August 28th, 6:00 PM. Everybody good?
I'm good with all that.
Okay. And then, then after that, you have your first, your final adoption dates, which is your first hearing, is on September 9th. That following Monday, I have a two-day window to advertise. And then we do the final adoption, so. There's also two advertisements that I do extra because I just like to get it out there for the budget. So I do two weeks prior to that first hearing, just in the newspaper, and I'll, I'll put it on the website, too. But I do a first, you know. So that was an additional one that the state doesn't really require, but we do that.
And, and just so you know, we scheduled three. But depending on everybody and how it goes, we may be able to do it in two. You know, we don't have to do it in three. So just, just try to keep that in mind also. Okay? All right. Next, we go to 5D2, Main Street Lift Station Property Acquisition. Oh, Bert's going to do this?
Okay. This pertains to the extension of the wastewater collection line to the Camp and Conference Center. That extension has been, over time, expanded and enlarged. And this is the expansion of the line just before it comes into the plant. Before you, on the screen, is the tiny portion of land we need to acquire. That is just, it's on North Main Avenue, north of Kenny LeBlanc's area. And that shows the very small area. We've already got a lift station north of that. That's the fuzzy thing you see. It's not exactly, doesn't look like it's in the triangle, but it is. We've negotiated purchases from other landowners for lift station sites around the town. One south of the high school on Green Dragon Drive, most notably. When I approached this landowner, the Jensen's, they requested initially the same price as the other landowner. And I did the math, and it was probably 2,500 bucks. And said, Kevin and I agreed, we'd certainly recommend that to the town. They came back and wanted more. I actually said they didn't care if they sell it or not and requested ultimately $25,000. I did the math and just under a million bucks an acre for undeveloped, frankly unusable land in Lake Placid. And admittedly, that flew all over me a little bit. I'm used to folks contributing to our town and helping us grow and do. But it's their land. It's not ours. And I appreciate the town needs to buy it. But at this point, they have not been willing to move on that or commit further. So you can write the check for, if they'll still do 25,000, I don't know. Or we can commence condemnation proceedings. I would refer it to a different council. I've not done condemnation work in my career for the town, just haven't needed to. So the proposed resolution, I would need to make two changes. I used the word approximately a million dollars. I'd like to change that with the exact calculation. If you will approve, subject to that modification, I'll get with Kevin and we'll do the number based on 25,000 for his request. And I would change it from town to, no, that would be the only change.
So the only thing I would add to that is, you see in the, in the drawing, so I included a, the, the full parcel, which goes all the way to the building, but he does have parking on part of that. And if we were forced to go into condemnation to eminent domain, then you might consider taking that whole piece of that triangle property, which you could use for stormwater. It's not big enough for much else. I don't believe it's a buildable lot. But that's still, the only piece we need is adjacent to our existing lift station. We're expanding that lift station as part of the overall larger project with the wastewater plant. And so it doesn't work very well anywhere else. You could put it on the other side, which you'd still negotiate with, how many smaller piece? But then you put part of that on county-owned right-of-way, which you run into the issue if they want to expand the road, and then you run into issues there. So that's the only comment there. And I just need direction from the council on, on what they want to do and how we proceed. And just be aware that whatever you set, depending on how you set a price, you're going to kind of set a price for any future land purchases.
This is not the traditional condemnation resolution where we address public purpose and determine the amount. This is simply authorizing staff to go forward, continue negotiations, would hire counsel if necessary, but begin the process, shall we say, including appraisals. And I couldn't remember, it's Darrell and Lynn Jensen.
So Kevin, just the striped area is, can you just, just trying to clarify. So over here to the right, the striped area is existing?
So just to the right, the red, if you look at the red hatch square, that's 50 by 50. The area to the right of that, which is very fuzzy, is on the, is where the existing town lift station is.
So the little blue last of the triangle there?
It is right in here. If you see this, this is our existing Main Street Lift Station. And, and that will be expanded. So there'll be two more tanks that go in adjacent to it, a permanent generator, which there's not one there now. And this becomes basically an additional wet well, additional storage. We need, we need additional storage for the capacity that's going to come running through that lift station.
So what we're talking about is that hatched, red-hatched area. They want 25,000, and that works out to be a million dollars an acre?
Just under a million.
And the rest of the blue, they still own it?
Correct. And Kevin's point is if we're going to the trouble of condemnation, we need, in that area-
For future?
Well, no, for, for drainage, I'm sorry, for stormwater management.
Okay.
You know, we wouldn't be condemning just for future. You're not allowed to do that. But you can condemn for public purpose. And a town administrator is saying, we need stormwater management there as well.
So if I'm reading it right, you offered them 2,300, 2,300, and they want 25,000?
Yes. Well, I didn't offer. I was trying to find out, because it's, it's not my place to make an offer. I was trying to find out what they would do. They came in initially with 60,000 an acre, which is what we've paid for other lift stations. They are smaller, they're unique. I get it. It's, it's a higher than normal Grove acreage price, for example. But that didn't set, and he wanted significantly more money, almost times 10.
Okay, so as, as owners or audience as it is to 25,000, what would the town be spending on legal fees and so on and so forth? If, if it went to condemnation?
I can't answer that question.
I'm, I'm just trying to weigh, you know, it, it hurts to pay that money. But in the long run, is it the more effective thing to do?
I would, I would ask that you, or excuse me, I would recommend that you adopt the resolution. This is not committing you to anything other than continued negotiation. Tells everybody, we're serious, we're going forward. And next month, I'll bring back with, bring back a proposed agreement with council and price. So you'll see the exact numbers as well as the cost of the appraisal.
Because the flip side of that is then, word gets around, now we're paying a million dollars an acre.
I know, I know.
So that's not a good, a good, a good option.
And then there's, okay, for the timeframe of it as well, though, so how quick to, I mean, are we being held to the gun? And do they take that under consideration in condemnation? That it's an urgent matter? Or how does that work?
So we still have time on bidding the lift station. So we're not out of time year yet. We are cranking through our time. We, we are on the same deadline of the 2026, but we need about a year before that. So we have time as far as the lift station that goes on acquiring the property. That's not, that's not the issue as far as our time goes. So we still, we still have time to negotiate. Eminent domain in the takings and the procedures of when you take eminent domain, I have been involved in an eminent domain case in Henry County. So if you, if you got to that point, you authorize that, we would take the property. The negotiations, the court case, whatever follows after that, the litigation then goes, may go all the way to a jury trial. You get an appraisal, they get an appraisal. And you present what is fair and reasonable appraisals. But we actually take the property immediately. We have access and use to it. And then it runs, runs through the process, through the litigation process.
And they all, but they also have to weigh in their mind, what is it going to cost them? I mean, take the, take what we offer them now, which I think 60,000 is a high price. And do they take that offer? Or do they have agony for the condemnation process? So I think, I don't know if it was me, I would take the town's offer. But that's the negotiations.
Well, I did understand, I don't know, this is way back. I did some research on this because we were, for whatever reason, we were buying some land, maybe when, I don't know why. But I did read up on it. And we are allowed with, you know, even if we get an appraisal for, on behalf of our citizens, to pay one and a half times. So 50% more than the value of the property without going to any procedure. So in other words, we can pay 50% more than the value of the property that we know is really the value. But other than that, I don't think we're supposed to pay more than that as, on behalf of the citizens. I mean, we're spending their money. And that, that's what I understood at that time, but that's been years ago. So I don't know if that's a rule or not. Like, hey, you know, we can go overboard, but we don't know if we can go that overboard because that's a lot of money. Maybe we should just have Bert bring it back and see what the next step is. Because I don't want to do anything that I'm not supposed to do either. I don't think any of us do. We can't overpay for property.
No.
Well, and I, I agree with what Joyce said, that we, I don't want to set a precedent to other people where we may have to purchase property in the future that we are willing to pay a million dollars an acre.
I think the 60,000 was high to begin with. The appraisal may show that it's-
What else are you going to use it for? It's, it's like unusable property. What are you, with setbacks and that? How can they use that property at all?
Well, I guess the point is to give authorization to continue negotiating.
Right, right. So we need to do the resolution. Is that what, what we're going for, Bert? We're going to approve this resolution?
Yes, if you approve the resolution with, and authorize me to correct the million-dollar per acre, because it's not a million, it's under that, and I want to be precise.
I'll make that motion.
Hold on, let me, let me put, let me read the resolution into the minutes. Resolution of the Lake Placid Town Council regarding the condemnation of property owned by Mylachi?
Malachi.
Yeah, Malachi, 310 LLC, Dara L. Jensen and Mary L. Jensen. Okay.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any other comments from the podium? There are none. We'll take you to the audience.
Ken LeBlanc, I used to rent a space from this landlord. And one thing, and it was right down the street from there. And one thing I noticed, there's a bunch of drainage grates that go across the Journal Plaza, north to the alleyway that's supposed to be between the building to the south of that drawing. And what would happen is all the water that comes through there was coming out through the last drainage grate. It's supposed to go underneath the road to cross the street and go into a retention pond there, but it doesn't work. It's not, doesn't suffice. So the water would come out of this, when it overwhelms, it would come out of this and go to the alley and then go basically into the French drain, which is the train track. But what it does, it washes the road out. So I know we're about to pave that road in the back. But if you get this property, it's a great location to pipe that, continue that pipe and get it to storage on this property. So I think the idea of getting this property beyond what you need for this sewage lift station is a really good idea because it can help solve a problem that we've had for many years on that end of town. And again, there's nothing else you could do with that property. You can't possibly build a building on it. So I, I agree with you guys, spending the money to buy it, spending one and a half times, fine. You know, I also agree that you shouldn't be overpaying for it. So, but I, I think it is a good idea to buy that property and hopefully, you know, solve a problem that we've had for years. And I don't think it's going to go away until you get some kind of property like this that you can solve it with. So I think it's a good idea.
Somebody's going to question my wisdom. I'm going to agree with Ken a third time tonight.
Uh-oh.
That pipe actually goes toward this parcel before it comes- That pipe actually goes toward this parcel before it comes under. You're right, it would be fairly easy to redirect the drainage.
Yeah.
Into that.
Exactly.
I recall that one vividly, it was a nightmare.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah. Maybe you could put it underground and do some parking above ground in the future there if needed. I mean, I don't think there's the need for parking there right now. I think there is a need for drainage there, you know, retention pond there right now. That's a definite need, yeah.
Thank you, Ken. All right, no other comments? Bring them back, hold the council.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Okay, next is 5D3, RPAC request for Lake June Park and pickleball courts.
Okay, so this was tabled from the previous month's meeting. One of the large concerns from Councilman Charles, if I corrected, was the space that people use for playing. So we shifted the pickleball courts. So we actually rode out there a couple of times, looked at the facility. There's actually a guy that on a regular basis throws the discus from here out. And then, so this is a dry pond, so it's not, it doesn't turn into unusual property. But we did shift it down to keep a large area in here on the flat section. We're not, we're not impacting the soccer fields, which are still to the south and goes up the hill. So, but we brought that back for council discussion and consideration. So it does extend the parking, adds some additional parking spots, but you don't have to. You can always cut those short. They don't need to come down here. Again, this is a conceptual, this is not a, by any means, an engineered drawing. These drainage ponds are going to change based on what the engineers come up with with southwater management. This is, this is strictly conceptual, open to anybody's interpretation. I don't take any license on any of it and don't take any insult if you don't like it.
So I'm going to make the same three comments I did a month ago. The feedback from the community, when we did our door knocking on the pickleball court was three things. One, the location, two, the overall rationale. And at that time, it was to spend 78,000 for town money, which is now 200,000 for town money. And so I appreciate moving it back a little, but I still think that location right there and all that green space, you know, the, the Lake June Park is being overtaken by a sports complex now. Because the people, you know, now there is parking there. But they picnic, the kids play there. You've got the playground equipment to the left, right? The playground is over there to the left, which is now kind of cut off with parking, pickleball courts. And I'd like to see the location go elsewhere, not in any of that green space there. Over on the other side, Kevin and I had mentioned this before, off of Jackson Road between the ballparks, looks like, you know, there may be some room. We have a lot of other land that we own throughout the town. Maybe there's another location that's more conducive to pickleball than to take up the green space that's being used for the picnickers and the beachers and that, and turn it into more sports activity there. So the location and then the other is $200,000 from town budget. Is pretty expensive of being a high priority versus some of the other things that we'd like to see in place for families and the youth.
I might add, which I forgot, this feature of that sports complex that goes through, is that when it wasn't being used for regional sports, it would be used by the community. And the indoor court was for basketball, gymnastics, pickleball, all kinds of indoor activities, which would have been air conditioned as well. So part of the selling, selling point was is that the, the local people could use those facilities when they weren't being used for regional tournaments. So that was going to facilitate local needs, just to throw that into the mix. Although we don't know if that's ever going to happen. But I'm just saying that was part of the selling point on that, to create these wonderful sports arenas for local people as well.
Can Phil, please fill me in on the history of why the location was chosen to be Lake June Park versus some other place?
Let me, if I may, I'll address two or three things at one time. I wasn't part of the discussion to decide at Lake June Park, but that is where you have pavilions and facilities and, and restrooms. And it is designed and built as a regional park. So I think, and it's been substantially funded by the county, over a million dollars, I believe, that they have spent on part of this as a regional park. So I think that may have driven into it. If you move the pickleball courts over to the other side, then you're going to eliminate the parking that is on the other side for the other ballfields and the other playground that's on there that's not pictured in this picture. So this was, the site was chosen by the council, not by me. Might have been part of the fill, I don't know, but it was, it was approved by the council. The, if you went back to the original proposal, which was a lot less parking and paving, the increases in the parking and paving that benefits the boat ramp and the, the 80 something number of people that park here for the ballfields. These, this is a, a new pavilion and this parking facilitates access to the playground. Because right now you have dirt parking back over here and then you have to walk to the playground. So that's the concept on the design. If you choose to move it somewhere else, then you've got to decide where that somewhere else is going to be. And then you create a facility there with paving. If you're going to have bathrooms, restrooms available, then you've got to look at building those and what else you're going to, the ancillary pieces of that. If you wanted to go back, the, I bet you it's very hard to see. I don't know if I can pull that up. So if you wanted to go back to a $78,000 match and just build pickleball courts and not do the parking, matter of fact, you could make it a lot less than that. And if you just wanted to build the pickleball courts and the, by themselves, you could probably do it without any county city match. You'd build a pickleball courts with a $200,000 grant, it's 243,000. You've still got lighting and other subsurface things in the pond. So you might do that with an RPAC match. So you have options there. It's entirely council decision. If you, you cannot move this grant. This grant was specific to this project, it's specific to this site. You can give up the grant. That's entirely council's decision. You haven't accepted, you've applied for and awarded the grant, you have not accepted the grant yet. So you can give up the grant. You can probably write off getting grants for another two or three years, but that's again, entirely up to the council if you want to do that. But you will not move this pickleball court or reduce this pickleball court in this grant. This grant was very specific in the application. You have to provide them surveys of the property and the boundaries and you make representations of where you're putting it. So, so that, again, you have options of whether you build it or whether you don't build it. You don't have to accept the grant. So if you choose to move it somewhere else, it becomes much more expensive unless you have somewhere, unless you were going to put them at Stewart Park where you already have a restroom.
No, thank you. I didn't realize that the grant was tied to this location.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's important we realize too that if we, we've been, we have this grant, if then we don't use it and we look like, well, we're just putting in for grants and we don't really care about it and we're not going to get approval in the future for grants like that. And our, our town really needs grants, so.
No, please, please don't misunderstand. I'm not saying that not to do it. I'm just trying to get the whys and the background.
Sure, sure, okay. So Kevin, it needs to be in Lake June Park.
Has to be, if we get, has to be if we get the grant money.
That's what, that's my question. So, but it doesn't need to, it could go, I mean, we, again, I'll keep going back over by the ballpark side. There's room over there, it could, so it could be elsewhere in, as long as it's within Lake June Park.
I believe you could move it somewhere in Lake June Park. If you take the other side of the park where you want to put it, you're going to take the parking that they use for the football fields and the other baseball fields. So there's, this is a lot more space on it than the other side of the park. I believe that's a difficult situation if you're going to, if you're going to put it on the other side. If you look at the other side, there's a large drainage pond that covers partial, part of that. I looked at that to see what the difficulty was. So again, you're going to eliminate the parking for that side of the park. And you have on game nights, 30, 40 cars parked over there in that parking area, which you'll take up with pickleball courts. So you're going to eliminate the people that are using that baseball field. You have over 100 cars parking there on multiple nights during, during the Little League season.
Yeah, I mean, parking is becoming a problem, you know, on the weekends today over at the park. I mean, I think as this come, has come up, a lot of us have been paying a lot more attention to the number of boats with trailers, the people parking. And that's without pickleball, a splash park or others, and the soccer that I'll talk about later. So I think right now, we're starting to run into constraining parking on the weekend where they're just parking everywhere because it's not controlled. And, you know, and I had mentioned before, we, we probably need to determine in five years, how do we see that park? What would we like to see in that park? You know, if it's pickleball today, where is the pickleball? It's a splash pad, a lot of people want to see a splash pad down there too. So that, I think we're getting into a lot of interest to do things and then where do you do it? And where's the parking? This parking is not enough for boat parking as we see it on these summer weekends now.
Again, parking is strictly conceptual, but if you wanted to change and move more of that to some other areas or make more of it boat parking, then that's an option. So obviously Memorial Day and so the summers are big, big boat days. We've been tracking parking during the week. We don't have anybody there on the weekends counting. Obviously the weekends are the big days. During the week, it's four or five boats generally on average and sometimes upwards of that. The big parking days are obviously during, during the Little League season. I've been out there a couple of times counting cars and, and 80 plus cars on this side, 30 cars on the other side. And that's night after night. Those are the big, those are the big parking areas. The boat parking, yeah, this is still only eight or 10 boat spots. So the rest of them would have to park if they were going to do it. If you decided to do it, they'll park over in this area where they parked today. That's actually part of a drainage pond. But it's a shallow drainage pond and they pull in there and park there and they still park over in, in this area, even though it gets, gets really problematic if you're going to try and actually put a spot in this area, a designated spot because of accessing. You've got to be able to get in and out of, with the boat trailers and where your traffic patterns are going. So you make those turns and you'd be able to get back up and to, and to make the boat ramps. So the circulation is, is quite an issue for boat trailers and traffics. We've looked at a number of different, probably four or five different parks and boating facilities, trying to figure out where the, where it made sense and what we could make. And again, this is conceptual, that when we showed it to Paulston and said, that's not near enough drainage dry ponds and you're going to have some other, going to continue to be an issue until we actually have an actual design or you decide where we're going, whether we're going to move forward or not.
So what are you looking for?
Looking for a motion. If we're going to have a motion of whether if you're not going to do it, then we need a motion to deny the grant and we will discontinue worrying about this pickleball subject. Or to accept it and move forward with an RPAC request. So if you want me to change the RPAC request, then we will also need to have that discussion. So the, if you want to eliminate the parking, we can go back to the original RPAC request for, or 78,000. That's entirely up to council. You get to decide what you want to do. It's 286,000 dollars, including the sidewalk, earthwork, all the sod and base and the, and the paving. So most of that goes, drops out, 200,000 plus of that is strictly the paving of the parking area. And I believe you can get some of that funding from RPAC. If you just decide that you want to do paving, then it's 50% you and 50% RPAC typically. So you could just work on paving if you want to do that and deny the grant. So I think those are the, those are the issues of whether you want to accept a grant, move forward with the pickleball courts or not, is the, really the bottom line. And I, so, and it ties into, you have people that want to speak on this.
Do we need a, a motion in order to allow people to speak? Okay. I'd make a motion that we accept the grant as we originally decided to do it and leave the pickleball courts essentially where they were originally planned. My notes indicate that it was exactly one year ago, in a meeting in July 2023, where we talked about the pickleball court project. And if I remember correctly, it was to try to keep the activities into one area. So my motion then would be to keep the pickleball courts essentially where they are and proceed with the project and the grant as it was originally accepted by this council.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
You'll second it?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments from the podium?
So this would be at the $78,000 town contribution?
That was the original RPAC request, so we'll cut out the paving and just do the pickleball courts with no paving. At the $78,000 contribution.
And in the location, not this design, but the one that was closer to the pavilion?
Believe that's.
If I can understand the motion.
I believe that's, in my, in my assessment, that is the motion.
Okay, we'll take it, the audience at this time. Now Marlene?
Just a couple of concerns on the pickleball courts at that location. I think one question, next. The location concerns me for a lot of reasons. Next. I think we already discussed, the one question, do we ever think about another location other than the park? Was another location ever considered? Or was this the only place or is it considered simply because there are restrooms there?
It was considered because we thought it was a good idea.
Whose idea?
Counsel.
Next. At $700,000. Next. The most important, one of the most important things is pickleball noise. And I wonder, did the town council do any study about noise and pickleball noise? It's measured by the pulse. Next. There have been many studies on it. And there are health risks to the noise. And the noise is by the pulse, which can be as high as 117 dB. That noise carries a lot in heat, it carries well over water. We have million dollar homes adjacent to the park. I doubt that those people are going to sit outside and listen to the ping, ping, ping constantly going on. There are a lot of concerns, a lot of towns are having lawsuits against the pickleball courts. I'm not opposed to pickleball courts. I'm just opposed to them in areas that will be disturbing to the community. Next. More information on it, I have a ton of websites that you can go to to get information about the noise. Next. This was taken on the, at Labor Day weekend. I want you to observe how many cars. A lot of the cars that are parked there on the road is where you're, the area adjacent as you're exiting. The top, there's a lot of activity down at the water and there's a lot of parking area here. It was very crowded that weekend. Next. This was this past weekend. Couple of points that I want to make. Cars again parked in the same areas where you saw them on the Labor Day weekend. And this time, the four pavilions down by the lake, all four of them were occupied. The kids were in the lake having a great time. They were picnicking and having a wonderful time. Imagine now they're trying to have a good time on a weekend and people are playing pickleball. The noise will be just unbearable. Next. The area that's encircled shows it, shows the houses along that are close. Some of those are well over a million. close. Some of those are well over a million dollars, and I doubt that those people want to hear it any more so than if you have families go down to the park, and they're having a picnic on the beach and adjacent to the water. They should be having a peaceful, restful day. The pickleball court sound hardly makes for restful day. If you go back and do the health studies, it's very damaging to the human body. Next. So let's take a look at some areas that are potential. Here we are here. If you look at the three adjacent acres, just slide it up and move it above, one area would be behind the court, the town hall that you have here, or the four points, the seven point four two, which is directly beyond that. We have a lot of land up here. We have parking available for it. You could have pickleball tournaments. You can have a lot of activity that takes place here with a lot of access, easy in, easy out. So people can come from all over. The noise level would be greatly reduced because you're not, you have no neighbors. Well, I don't know. The cemetery might get a little bothered by it, but other than that, you're not going to have residential areas and people trying to have picnics. Next. And here's why. You do have accessibility. You have the parking. As I said, the noise level, you're not disturbing anybody. Next. New concepts for youths and families. It's one of the things we've talked about and we've learned about in talking with people around the community. They want more activities for youth. Next. A splash park. So where are we going to put the pickleball courts and all of that? How about if we have splash park down there for kids and make it more enjoyable? Next. Can you imagine? Next. Now we do have some families and youth and families being able to go down and enjoy the day. At the same time, we can be having pickleball contests and pickleball tournaments at the town hall on property that's here, and everybody's happy. Thank you.
Okay. Charlie?
For the record, Charlie Wilson, Sun, I reside at seven sixty-three Sunset Point Drive. This site was chosen with Harry, Phil, and the group, the town council at the time. That's where it was determined. The houses you point to, this is a regional park that's been there for forty-one years. Do you not think the people who purchased the lots and subsequently built homes didn't realize there's a park there? I'm here to tell you, how many pickleball courts if you ever go, if you go to Sun and Lakes in Sebring, which I'm a member, it's approximately three hundred and fifty feet from the parking lot to the courts. You can barely hear it. And how you screen it and how you vegetate, you can use vegetative bearings.
We're not.
Marlene, I didn't interrupt you. I didn't interrupt.
Marlene, no. No. No.
I'm speaking to you. Yes, there's all kinds of noise. Do you know how many decibels a boat has launching? The same amount. Do you know how many a jet ski goes by? Way higher than that. Do you know how many screaming kids are out there playing baseball, playing soccer? There's noise. There's no expectation that there's not going to be noise next to a regional park. If you pull zoom that picture out for me, if you would, please. These million-dollar homes, of which one has a dedicated pickleball court in their yard four doors down. So this entire thing is meant to get the splash park. It's to kill the pickleball thing. I don't care what anyone says. It's it's someone else's agenda. This has been gone through. Where were you three years ago when we were talking about this? You come to the meetings every single week. You've been hearing, I have heard butt kiss out of you regarding these issues up until tonight. Isn't that convenient? The night before they vote on it to go to RPAC. Very convenient. You haven't said one word, and this has been discussed for two and a half years now. I can go chronologically through the dates. We started talking seriously August of eighth of two thousand twenty-two. On January ninth meeting, two thousand twenty-three, we decided the next meeting, we were going to get more research and and go determine whether we were going to go for an RPAC grant. February thirteenth, we decided to go. We went to the RPAC. RPAC would not give us the grant unless we got the FERDAP grant, which is specific to the site, specific to the site. We have to give the legals. We've already got engineering that we had to do for Swift Mud for the permitting. So there may be some variances within that area. You're you can move it. But right there, the I believe it's one, I don't think it's one of those houses. It's one of the new Brantley houses. It's one or two over, which is out of the frame there. They have their own pickleball court in their yard. So they have neighbors. They're going to hear a pickleball. So apparently it's not going to be that big of a deal. Where you're talking about is approximately four hundred feet away from the road, three to four hundred feet. And then with the road, you're talking four hundred feet. His home is buffered by a fence and that thing in his big garage that had recently had the fire there. So this is is I just find the timing very, very curious as to why all this comes up now when you've had three years and you never once said it to the previous council, you had any time concerns about it. But now tonight, the night we're supposed to make a decision whether or not to go forward to RPAC, and all of a sudden, it becomes an issue. So I find we've worked hard for this. There's a group of a lot of people that play in here. A lot of people. We're citizens, too. The benefits of anyone that's playing racquetball and paddle sports, there's just been research coming out, have a higher percentage of cognitivity than people that don't exercise and don't play paddle sports. There's all kinds of youth going into it. The Florida High School Athletic Association is considering making it an athletic high school sport. The NCAA is considering it as well. You go up to Charlie Brown Park, where it there's up there, you've got teachers after school in the middle of the day, right after school. They're going up there and playing. It's young people. It's older people. It's great exercise. And yes, there's there's a lot of things that people want splash. I'm not necessarily against those things, but not at the expense of something that we've worked hard. You turn down a grant to FERDAP, you lose your credibility, you're going to have a hard time in the future being taken seriously up there to be ranked as a project just because you don't like it, and you've never said a word about it prior to tonight. I find that awfully suspicious. And I would respectfully ask this council to consider giving Kevin the authority to present this to RPAC and approve it for this community. There's people here that may want to speak tonight to this. And there's hundreds of people. There's I have an app, where to play. Anywhere we go, I go to places all over. You hit where to play, and it pops up. Yeah. Josie mentioned Spring Lake. That's a nice court out in Spring Lake. It's still twenty miles. That's the nearest public court other than Sun and Lakes was John is a member down there. That's a quasi governmental thing that's not really open to the public. And it only has two dedic- two, well, some are tennis courts, but how many are designated actual pickleball courts?
They actually, but they have portable courts. They have portable courts.
Yeah, portable on tennis courts, not true pickleball courts. So I respectfully asked this council, we've been dealing with this for two and a half years, and it seems that everything that has come up before this council with me watching, we're relitigating everything that's ever been done up here. It's not that I'm against your ideas, but my goodness, we had people, if you look at the grant application, look at all the people that signed it. Well, we had people that want, well, everyone wants the world, but we had to go through a specific process. We had to get all the people's signatures on a petition. We had to do this. We had legal expenses that we had to get because the property's kind of funky and we have legal expenses tied it all together. There were some title issues that we had to get cleaned up. We had money involved with Paulson's engineering because it is going to affect our Swift Mud permit for down there. It's a perfect spot. It's centrally located with the trails that are going to be coming in one day potentially down the road. It's a great place for past people to ride their bikes down to placid lakes and everything. And what I do recommend you guys do in the future under your five-year plan is you see a lot of these grows around here dying? You better start looking for land to expand because we are growing, and that's going to be a wise thing. It's not that I'm against any of these ideas that you have. I think some of these are great ideas. But this one has been in the works. It's specific for this site. There's a lot of people in our community, hundreds. You can go on just the, there's over two hundred people on the Genesis Center website for our pickleball thing. There's hundreds of people that play. People come. It's a destination. Hey, they got courts. Let's go play there. It brings in people from out here, out of town that may want to live here or just visit here and play here. There's a lot of advantages to it. So the sound thing, to me, is is not an issue. It really is not. You can screen it. You can buffer it with vegetation. It's screened now. It's not any louder than anything else that already currently happens down at that park. And I thank you for your time, and I respectfully request that if you do do this, you may want to separate the two and give some latitude on your matches, however you all seem fit, but separate the the paving portion from the pickleball portion because there's hundreds of people that have been waiting for this for several years. And I'm just very passionate about this, and so is a lot of people in this community, and I'd like to get it. We just, and it's not y'all's fault, this the FERDAP thing. We went through the process with the county. They told us, Harry was in the meeting, Phil was in the meeting, we will fund this project. Great project. Get the FERDAP grant. We applied for the grant through no fault of ours. For whatever reason, this year, it took six months normal, longer than normal to get gone through and approved. We finally got it. I'm ready to start moving forward on this. But this is going to be a hub, and I suggest looking in the future, maybe purchasing some more land in that whole area to, because you're going to have to expand things the way we're growing at some point. I just thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, he's next.
Jack Calmly, six oh seven Sunset Point Drive. I want to talk about the the parking portion of the of this project. The conceptual plan that you've provided us shows eleven boats, boat trailer parking spots. I've been out there for the last three Saturdays counting the boat trailers there, and all three Saturdays, there were nineteen or more boats there. So you definitely don't have enough. And, you know, the way it is now, they park, you know, wherever because there's no particular designated areas. But you definitely need more than nineteen spots for boat trailers to be parked. Besides that, you're talking about the drag boat races, which are going to have supposedly fifty boats, which means fifty boat trailers, right? Now, let's say we build this complex pretty much the way it is as far as the parking end of it. I'm not talking about the the pickleball courts, right? But the the parking end of it, right? The project obviously won't be done for the drag boat races this this year, but maybe it'll be done for the drag boat races next year and the year after. And eleven parking spaces is just not going to hack it for for fifty drag boats plus a few trailers for the the jet skis that they use to supervise the the race. If your intention is to drive the boaters away from this area over to Bishop Park, then this this layout is okay, right? Bishop Park has quite a few more parking spaces. They have they have about sixty-seven parking spaces over there that could be used for boat trailers, right? So it looks to me as if, I don't know how to say this, we're trying to put two pounds of something in a one-pound bag, and it's not going to work in the long run. If if anything, five years, ten years, fifteen years down the road, we're going to have more boats and boat trailers in this area. I mean, the lakes in in this area, they're the biggest draw, right? People come here for the boats, right? And to get away from congestion and maybe Broward County or some someplace like that. But the lakes are a big draw, and we want to keep providing them with the access to these lakes, and that includes someplace to park their trailers. Thank you.
My name is Rosemary Heath, and I live at five eighty-eight Sunset Point. This issue occurred when citizens began talking to other citizens. I sat outside or stood outside of Publix for days, speaking to the citizens. And pickleball never came up. We need two hundred thousand dollars? How can you justify two thousand dollars for a pickleball court when our town needs repair? Our playground needs repair. Our playground is so worn that some of the equipment needs to be condemned. Have you, any of you been to the playground? You go down that slide, and there's no, um, there's nothing there to protect the children. All you see is the cement. All the protection that they poured or put underneath the slides and the swings are all gone. A little child goes down that slide and goes underneath it, two-year-old, year, um, three-year-old, and they slip and go onto that slide, they're going to hit cement that's this high and jagged because there's nothing covering it. I have pictures to show you. You walk into the park, and you all you see is this plastic paper here and there, which was underneath what was supposedly covering the ground and making it safe for the children. And the town, if, and the people, they want a place to gather. They want a place to go with their families. You have grandmothers here that have no place to take their children. Wouldn't it be wonderful if they could have a safe playground and a splash park? I don't know who's going to be playing pickleball at two in the afternoon with it being a hundred degrees. I know from experience that in Palm Beach County, we have a splash park by the zoo, and children and parents are lined up there before nine o'clock to play in this park. We have to chase the children out. The police literally have to come and tell everybody they have to leave because the children don't want to leave at five o'clock. And this is every day, every single day, rainstorm, everything. And if it storms, if there's lightning and thunder, everybody's rushed undercover. And these children and parents wait till the thunderstorms are gone, and then they come out and they play again. We have a town, a town that needs repair as well. The streets or the sidewalks need repair. The buildings need repair. Um, my notes, I'm nervous. I'm sorry. Um, there is no maintenance right now, keeping this quaint little town the charm that it used to have. Downtown needs repairs as well. Um, there's parking voids. We talked about crosswalks. Um, it needs beautification. It needs flowers. It needs something. It needs pickup. It's ugly right now. And I don't know what else to say. I just think the citizens, the people I talked to, and they were hundreds, they wanted activities for the adults, for the children, for themselves. And pickleball isn't for everybody, and it's definitely not for you when you're, it's a hundred degrees outside. But our town is to walk around our town and see flowers and talk to people and go into the stores. You'll do that when it's a to people and go into the stores, you'll do that when it's 100 degrees outside. A splash park or a playground, the children will play on a playground at 90 degrees, 100 degrees. I took my kids every day to the park. The whole time, from the time they were days old till they were in high school. I, I don't see putting pickleball ahead of all the citizens. Yes, you have some citizens that want pickleball, but I think you have far more citizens that want something for their kids, themselves, their parents. And I think you need to take the citizens into consideration because you're not doing it right now. Not when you're taking all this away from them.
My name is Chris Nelson. I'm part of the group that came here from Genesis Center Pickleball Courts. We were playing tonight and I wanted to attest to, we have people there from eight years old to 90 years old playing pickleball. And we're playing indoors with no acoustic panels. I can attest that there are no 110 decibel sound levels. Everybody's comfortable. We're having fun, we're playing and there are no physical issues or hearing issues on an indoor court, or three courts, I should say, 12 people playing simultaneously. So I don't believe the noise is an issue at all. I've been playing there for four years now at the Genesis Center and it is for everyone. There's a lot of people that are playing. Like I said, we have kids come as young as eight years old and we have players as old as 90 years old still playing pickleball.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Josephine Calmley. Little concern here. I spoke before on the pickleball courts. I know we're tired of hearing it. But here you have, are we going to have tournaments at this pickleball courts? Has anyone spoke about tournaments? Okay. Do you have any idea who coordinates that? You need someone to coordinate it? You need facilities, okay? If you ever watch it on TV, even the small-time tournaments takes people, okay? Volunteers, scheduling, okay? So I don't know how, what the thoughts are on how much tournaments you think you're going to bring in. I think it's wonderful to want to accommodate the people, but you cannot compare an indoor facility to an outdoor facility. I'm a pickleball player. I like them both. Indoor facilities is totally different, okay? You're not going to have, it's, it's just different. There's no comparison. So here you are, you're going to have put out $200,000 where originally it was going to be $78,000. And with not only that, I didn't get an opportunity to talk about the drag racing. The drag racing is, has anyone on the panel been to a drag race underwater? Anybody? Nope? Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question. Could you, very first?
Sure. Has, have any, has anyone been to a boat drag race?
I have, yes.
Okay. Now, you're estimating possibly 1,000 people could attend this drag race, possibly. And I can't even fathom where you're going to put them. Now, I know, I, I went to the park this weekend again, the week before, and I'm seeing all these boats and trailers all over the place. Now, if you're going to bring in 50 boats, 50 trailers, does anybody know whether they're going to be able to ramp the trailers or are they going to take it off of a front-end loader and then put it in the water?
Can, can I just ask, for the record, is, didn't we already approve the drag racing? Is it, is it a?
Yes.
Didn't we do that already? I think the comment time for the drag racing has expired.
From the meeting tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
You didn't give me the opportunity. You did not give anyone the opportunity. I sat here for-
I think it's in the record that we did offer that to the public.
I sat here for two hours waiting. So, but I'm just suggesting, you know, if, if you've made your decision, you realize you're going to need an EMT on staff, you're going to need more police on staff when you have this drag race. We have no beach, okay? So where are the spectators other than those that will be on the water watching? How are they going to watch this? And the traffic. The traffic is going to be horrific, bringing in 50 trucks with 50 towing a trailer. And the area is going to be quite congested. So there you have, I think you said three times you're going to have this. You contracted for three times for the drag race and that's one a year, okay? So now you have locals, where are they going to watch this if they can't watch it from the water? Not everyone can do that. So that's sort of not fair. But hopefully you've planned knowing that, who pays for this? Who pays for the EMT on site? Who pays for the police force? Is it we, the taxpayers? Or it's the place that has organized it? Georgia, I believe it is. Is the organization in Georgia? The organization, is it in Georgia?
I don't know where their headquarters are.
For some reason, I thought someone said it was in Georgia. Deborah, do you know?
No, that was discussed before. That was all decided before I went on the TDC. It was just, just like last Tuesday, yeah.
So, so you're saying this outside organization who does, who is having these races here, are they going to take on that responsibility of police coverage or are we paying for that? They're going to take responsibility of ETM, EMTs on board?
That's their responsibility.
That's our responsibility.
No, their responsibility.
Okay, so that's their responsibility. Where are we going to put all these thousand, we're going to have maybe, possibly, or hoping, and I believe in revenue. We need revenue. I don't disagree with that. We want business. But have you thought about maybe the congestion it would be in the area? You know, again, as my husband had mentioned, Bishop Park, if they have to ramp these boats, put them down the ramp, there's two, I believe there's two ramps there. There's only one ramp here, okay? And one thing I noticed that you said, Bishop Park is, we lease it to the county, correct? Okay. I noticed how much nicer their park is. Their, their shaded areas, everything is so much nicer than ours. Do we pay to keep up our park or do they because we lease it to them? Does the county pay for that? Why is their park?
County pays for all of Bishop Park. We don't pay for the Bishop Park.
So we pay nothing for me?
Correct.
Okay. But we own it. I, I don't understand that. If we own it, you know, okay. So, but we ought to go take a look at it sometime, see how much nicer it looks. So I know you want to upgrade our park with all these events coming. But again, 200,000 for a pickleball court? And I'm one of the people probably that also, you know, I enjoy pickleball, but I want to think of everybody. How's it going to work for everybody and how much congestion are you going to have? And especially, please look at the traffic on, when you do this drag racing because that's going to cause a lot of traffic because you don't put all the border, boats in the water at the same time. You maybe put two, I think maybe eight boats or 10 boats each time they do a different cycle, okay? So that's a lot of maneuvering. So that's why I get concerned also with the pickleball court. How much room is there, you know, for this area? Are we going to buy more land to expand so we don't interrupt the soccer fields? I mean, there's a lot of interesting thoughts here. I, I don't understand how you can think you can get 1,000 guests at this ramp and be spectators, some of them. And, and the revenue, you're looking for revenue for the town. How, Saturday's town usually closes down early. Sunday, they're not even open. So how much revenue are we going to pull for those two days? But I know you've already made your decision, but I don't know that you really researched to see. We're putting out, you're going to be putting out a ton of money. How much of it, no, it's not going to cost us anything. So, but what about our roads? Just for people to get around, you know? I mean, you need to have your locals be able to get around where they want to go. So, and that's kind of all a concentrated area. So you're really, how many, so I'm just trying to give you an idea here. So it'll cost taxpayers nothing, but we will be very congested at that weekend. I mean, I know, Ken, and then with the pickleball courts, I think we should go back to the 78,000 what was originally proposed. If everybody loves pickleball, they'll come out and play pickleball. They just, I, I think it should be moved over to what was suggested earlier to further away from the boat ramp because, thank you. Just wanted to get my thought out there to you.
All right, any other comments?
Ken LeBlanc. So I don't really have a dog in this fight other than my kids go every other day to Charlie Brown Park to play pickleball. I've seen, I know a lot of people that play pickleball. I know I have to go and do it myself. And if I didn't have to go to Charlie Brown Park to do it, I probably would do it if it was here. I think the town of Lake Placid's mandate should be to always make the town of Lake Placid a more livable place in all ways, right? I think that's what this does. I, I love the idea that the parking is going to get paved and it's only getting paved because we're talking about doing pickleball. If we weren't doing pickleball, we wouldn't be paving the pave, the parking, which should have been paved many years ago, but there was no funding to do it. I do like, you know, Carlene's idea of pulling down the pickleball parks and leaving some more area up there for, for kids to run around and play. I think that's not a bad idea at all. I think, you know, when you talk about, you know, we don't have enough room for cars with trailers for the boats, be careful what you wish for because the more you put there, the more people end up on the lake on boats. And, you know, my family had a house on Lake June and when my kids were growing up and we would spend time on the lake and it was scary when the holidays came and as many people got on the lake in boats and jet skis that don't usually, aren't usually on there, it got scary, you know? And so I think you could, you know, it, it, there is a sense, yeah, there's plenty of them up there at Bishop Park. There's some of them here, but I don't know that you want to have an unlimited supply of places for people to park their trailers because you're going to get an unlimited amount of boats and jet skis and everything on the lake and then you're just going to get more people in the hospital getting run over by boats and jet skis. So I, I, you know, even though there's only 12 spaces there maybe, I don't think that's necessarily a, a bad thing. This is not a lake that we have bass tournaments on like, like Isipoga does, which has a huge facility for parking, you know, cars and boats and trailers and all that because they have bass tournaments. So, and this, you know, these things take five years to happen. You know, it's been going through for three years. And I know there's some new people on the board that you're having to deal with the legacy stuff that you weren't involved in from the beginning. So it's hard for you guys to have to deal with this after the fact, but just know that one day, you know, you'll go off the board and somebody else will come in and your legacy stuff, you know, your stuff will be their legacy stuff, you know? And so I think some of this stuff you have to make hard decisions on and, and allowing things to go forward. But I really don't see the downside to this, you know? And as somebody who spends over 40,000 a year in property taxes in the town of Lake Placid, this is exactly the type of thing I would like to see. You know, I like to see my tax dollars go to because it does make the town of Lake Placid a more livable place. And I don't want my daughters to have to drive up to Sebring at night to, to play pickleball, you know, when we could have them right here. And this location is our sports complex. It's where we have soccer. It's where we have football. It's where we have, you know, baseball and softball and everything else. So why wouldn't we put it right here in this location? It seems like the perfect place to put this. You know, because there's other activities likely going on at the same time, you know, in many cases, other than this might be, you know, also going on at night. But baseball goes on at night too. So I don't see the downside to this, you know? I think, you know, the parking might be tweaked and things like that, but when else are we going to get the opportunity to pave all this parking? You know, that's all shell rock and, and potholes. It has been for the last 20 years that I've been here. I, I think it's time that the town of Lake Placid starts upgrading from shell rock parking, you know, to asphalt parking and, and just facilities, you know, that are good facilities for our community and stuff. So, I mean, and just keep in mind, we are never going to have a perfect project. It's never going to be a project that satisfies everybody's requirements. You know, we just got to get as good as we can get. I mean, this is government for Christ sakes. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's not easy, you know? So you got to get the most that you can get, the most money that you can get in a budget you can afford to make projects go forward and actually happen, right? Because can you imagine spending years doing things and then in the end it just never happens? You know, because people pop up with concerns and various concerns and stuff. Yeah, there's concerns. You know, is it going to be noise? Yeah. Baseball makes noise, football makes noise, soccer makes noise and pickleball makes noise. You know, it's not a reason, you know, stop a project, you know? So I, I really don't see the downside to this project, you know? I mean, I think it's a great project. I think it's, you know, we're only spending $200,000. You know, the money, rest of this money is coming from all different sources. And, and that's happened through many years of hard work to get to this point, you know? So even, even if you don't think it's, it's exactly what you want, you know, I think it is a project that's worthy of going forward. And in reality, we probably won't see it for two more years, you know, once this gets to this point. You still got to dry it and everything else. But I, I think it's, it's a good project that's worth going forward. Okay.
Thank you, John. My name is Chad Heath. I live at 588 Sunset Point Drive in Lake Placid. Actually, I, I think it's fine. People want to play pickleball, but I don't know why it needs to be adjacent to the water. I don't see it uses any, any portion of the water. My question is really, why there? Why not somewhere else? In the, in the distant, not too distant future, we're going to see the facilities for the beach and the boat ramps expand. We recently had a subdivision under review here in front of the council and we, some pressure was put on the developer and he removed the boat ramp that was in that. His understanding would be that this, this boat ramp would be available for the 100 homes that he was about to build. There's going to be congestion here. That's my only comment. If you could find, I'm not against spending the money. I'm not against people playing pickleball. It's probably a lot of fun. I've never done it, but probably great. But why there? Why block the, the shoreline? Why consume that precious space? That's my thought. Thank you.
Okay, so we, we got one more?
We have another.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Linskeug. I live over on Oak Beach Boulevard north of Lake Placid. I'm here as a private citizen, not necessarily a resident of the town of Lake Placid, but I'm also the USA Pickleball Ambassador for Highlands County. You have, in case you're not aware, you have two of them. Two of us who go around representing the sport of pickleball looking for the growth of the sport. And I come to you tonight with a number of my friends who I play pickleball with to ask that you move forward with your project at the Lake June Ballfields, the park, for one and one reason only, although there's a variety, but the main reason, there is no places to play in Lake Placid. As an ambassador for USA Pickleball, my phone number is on their website for people who visit this area looking for places to play. So when you have visitors coming to Lake Placid and they call me wondering what the latest schedule for local places to play, I have to send them to Sebring because there's no local places to play here in Lake Placid. Somebody brought up the Genesis Center. I run that program there. We have three indoor courts. It's a great place to play. It's a ministry for the church. We're not in the business of, of pickleball. We just want people to come and utilize the gym, but we're not the answer to the need for pickleball courts in this area. I have 280 odd people on my list just for the Genesis Center who have expressed and come through our program to play pickleball. And I'm just one location. So this, Sun Lake Estates, that was brought up earlier with their four courts. They just passed a, I don't know, local rule that you have to be a guest of somebody who lives within the special improvement district, whatever they call that, before you can play pickleball there. It's not open to the public. That's why you need these courts there. I think this location's the perfect location. It's a sports comp- It's a sports complex. I get a lot of the comments made. I understand the concerns. Pickleball projects all over this country deal with these, the same concerns. But the bottom line is, it's the fastest-growing sport in this country. In fact, it'll be as fa, one of the fastest-growing sports in the world. We have to accommodate the need. And right now, Lake Placid has a need for pickleball courts. And somebody brought up the fact about why having lights. Season here in our area is the busiest time to play pickleball. It's the greatest demand for the sport. It gets dark, what, at 4:30? What are people going to do in the evenings if they don't have lights in the pickleball courts? I guarantee it during seasons, those pickleball courts will be busy. So, again, I'm available to answer any questions concerning the sport of pickleball and the need for those facilities here in Lake Placid. And I can be reached out at any time, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? We have a motion in a second, so bring it back. We'll poll the council.
Can, can, can I hear the motion again? It's been a while.
To have the grant, to leave the pickleball court as it was approved previously. Is that basically?
To, to leave the pickleball court as it was originally approved from the previous council, and to allow it to be moved slightly forward if that's, if that's necessary to add a little bit. But basically, to keep it on that same plot, so that we don't lose those grants, and we can move forward with this project.
But that's important, because before, the motion was exactly like before, in the same location. So, now it's tweaking it a little, or what? I mean, because to me, it's important, and I've said that. It's the location to get it further back towards the soccer fields or somewhere else, so that we have the pavilion where the picnickers are. You have the straight over to the children's playground, so you have that more green space for the families. So, that's why I just want to clarify, because that tweaking it changed from the original motion.
It did not. I made a note right here when I said what I said, because I was just afraid that might come up. And what I said was, write what I wrote down in my notebook. Leave courts kind of as it is, except to move it a little. Now, that was poorly worded, but that's exactly what I said, and that's why I wrote it down when I said it. And that's what was seconded by Ms. Everhart.
So, quick clarification. This is the, what you're looking at on your screen is the original drawing, which puts it up next to the pavilion. And if you're okay with it, the revised drawing puts it to the south of the pavilion. So, that's the clarification. If you're okay with it in this location, that puts it south and leaves that buffer area there.
Yes.
Okay. The original, just again, for clarification. So, what we will build with the, with this motion is we will build the pickleball courts, which is the original motion with the dry pond. We will not do the paving. We'll move into some point in the future.
And could that be pushed towards the soccer fields more? Or was that?
Can we push more than that? We start running into some elevation issues if we go much further, because it starts sloping up towards before you hit that big slope up. So, you do have, if you look at that big tree, that's probably 50 yards or 60 yards from the trunk of that tree for an open space. So, it is a very good open space there and for people to play in. But you do start running into, if you go any further to the south, you're going to start running into some additional expense because of the elevation issues.
Yeah.
There was also my understanding that the main point to the motion was to proceed with requesting additional grant money.
No, it, to proceed with the grant money that we already have. We don't need any additional grant money. We already have the grant money. And to proceed with that grant money, because if we move it off of this location, we lose that grant money.
No, 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 not to take it off the location.
Okay. No, we're, we're okay with the grant money.
Okay, let me, let me weigh in here. Okay, so on the breakdown, it says RPAC money requested. Have we received that request?
No, that goes to RPAC in August.
I think that's the question. That's what we're talking about. It's not grant money, it's RPAC money. So, we still need to request almost $300,000. And if we don't get that, then I think that was what your question was. Here it is.
Didn't we get that RPAC money?
We have not requested the RPAC funding yet. That goes into the August budget meeting.
It'll be recognized.
Okay.
So, that 299,000 we have, that's part of the reason we raised the match. So, we have a, almost 60% to RPAC's 40%. We have not requested funds from RPAC in several years. They actually asked the question of when we were going to have our next grant request. When I was at the last RPAC meeting, they have, currently have approximately $650,000 in their budget, and they're going to run into the next budget cycle, which will add to that. They've approved, just approved, two projects to Spring Lake and the approximate amount of $200,000. So, I don't think it's an unreasonable request or expectation, considering the match. So, but that is, again, just for that clarification and information.
Thank you.
I think so the motion probably needs to be worded so that, and if we have proposed motions, that helps a lot, that, that we proceed, we proceed as planned, going forward requesting the RPAC money at this point of 299,274. And we move the, the courts, adjust the courts as much as we can to allow more play space. And that's it.
That's basically what I said, but you probably said it better.
Well, we do still need to ask for more money. We are still not there.
So, I'll, I'll go along with that adjustment, because you said it better. But I, I feel like, we feel pretty confident, and I think, Charlie, weren't you in those meetings with RPAC? Didn't you feel pretty comfortable that that money was going to come through?
We still have to ask for it.
I'm waiting to be recognized by the mayor.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
There's a possibility, because we applied for a paving portion of this at one time. And when we got the bids back, it was way, way above what they were willing to give us. And, I mean, it was over double the price of what we initially thought it was by the time we got the bid for it. So, we ended up giving that back. The last RPAC money that we received, to my knowledge, and Harry, correct me if I'm wrong, was when we redid the lights on one of the baseball fields. And that's been four years ago? We haven't had, received any RPAC money in four years. So, we're kind of due. It, it's, it's cyclic with the, the monies are very tight with the county, and it's kind of rotated between Sun and Lake, Sebring, Avon Park, and Spring Lake. We've been out of the cycle for a while. So, what you may want to do is break it into two separate grant applications and maybe have a different, and allow the city manager a range to go to, because, because we've been out of this, and we've always argued in the past that because we are the smallest municipality in Highlands County, you know, we have 2,500 residents, and basically a third of the population, the rest of them are county people that are using it. Well, the county's helping pay for it, so that's kind of been our, our line all along to get the other municipalities go with higher, higher matches, because they're closer to a 40 to 50% match of county to citizen ratio. So, that could be an option for you to consider, and is to break it off. And like Spring Lake recently, and I've heard through people that have been on and served on the RPAC, it seems to be cleaner. Instead of one bigger one, you, you know, just kind of breaking them out and itemizing how they are and what your matches are per. We went in with a lower match on the pickleball court only before the asphalt project. But I, I think it's a good thing if we can get it, but I don't want to, I don't want to mess up necessarily the pickleball courts. I would like to get those.
Then there would be no parking. There would be no pavement for parking, then just pickleball courts.
Correct. Or you might have, you might be required to put in a handicap spot or two. I'm not sure about that, to be ADA compliant. I'm, I'm not sure. But, but other than that, the reason why it was chosen, number one, because we do have the pavilion there. People could take a break into some shade, and the restrooms were there, and it is in the regional park. That was the initial things. We looked with Harry. We tried to keep it on that lower tier, where we're off the, the bigger fields, where they play and practice up on the top shelf. And it worked better for the engineering with the drainage. So, that, that was the rationale behind all the decisions were made to get to where we are today. Thank you.
Charlie, Charlie. So, if we split it, so that people that have been there had the 78,000 originally, that the town was going to contribute?
The match?
Yeah, so if we split it and just do the pickleball courts with the 78,000 from matching, and then get, split it and get another one to do the paving? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. And, and maybe have a little bit higher match on that. You may get it, you may not. But that's something that, you know, I would, because unfortunately, with government and sunshine, people are going to hear what you're saying, but you always try to, to give a range and try to, it depends on their budget. It depends on what other projects have been funded. And the fact that we haven't had any funded projects in, in like four years would probably help us in this endeavor. And given the, the ability to the town administrator to, a negotiation range to work, not to exceed, because that's how it kind of works. You're, it's a negotiation while you're in there, and then they vote on it. They're not the final arbiters of the decision. They're the recommenders. But generally, what they recommend gets approved by the county commissioner.
County commissioners.
I would say with a very high percentage. So, and that's all I have. I thank you for your time.
What's, what are the pickleball courts going to look like with no paving and all that shell being trampled all over them? I don't know. My thought is, let's just go for it and then stay in our ground. But I don't know. I, I mean, this is, you know, I wasn't part of these discussions. And the only thing I would say is that it is true, there's a lot to be said, that if we have gone and we've asked for this money, and we've pursued it, and then all of a sudden, we drop it, it does make us look like we're not following through, and we're not standing where we, 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 we're, we're just being namzy-pamzy in a way. I mean, if we started something, and we've been going down that road, and then we just stopped, then how are they going to know the next time we ask for money that we're not going to do the same thing? So, that concerns me probably more than anything. Now, how we structure this going forward, I don't know. What would you say? Would you go for the whole thing, or break it up, or?
We can, it is immaterial to me. I, we, we put the proposal together thinking that they have the funds available. We haven't asked for anything in four years. We could break it up into two, two different projects.
And then they're going to give us a little bit. They're not, why would they give us all of it? I mean, there's no point to give us all of it, if we're just saying, well, just give us a little bit.
So, Spring Lake got two requests in their last, in the last meeting. So, they were both smaller, but they totaled to, close to 200,000. They presented a five-to-10-year plan, which we're working on, because they liked that idea to see where we're at. And quite honestly, we have made some significant investments on our own without asking RPAC for any money. $300,000 for Bicentennial Park. And we're talking about making that a CRA project. Now, that's going to be an RPAC request for that playground, splash park, whatever y'all decide. That's going to be part of an RPAC request. We put Taylor Park in at our expense entirely, which could have been an RPAC request. So, we can make that, I, I think we have a good argument. I don't know. I've only been to one meeting at RPAC. But we have a history. We have a project. If you want to pull it out and do pickleball courts, at the $78,000 match, we'll build just a pickleball courts. We'll go back into the next, we can go back to the next meeting. We can make it two separate requests and work on paving as far as it gets us.
They're never going to give us, this is my thought. They're never going to give us, okay, if we go in and say, okay, let just give us a little bit, that that's what we're going to get. I mean, I, I just feel real strongly about that. I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson. I just, you know, we are kind of the stepchildren, I feel, a lot of times. So, I think we should go for it, and we should all show up and say we want it. And stand our ground, and by golly, give it to us.
And there is no question that needs paving.
It does.
Absolutely. But then also, for everybody else that has the 78,000 in their head, this is why it went from 78,000 to 200,000.
Two separate projects combining.
And why the RPAC requests, I don't remember what their number was, but we raised that RPAC request number substantially, too.
But paving needs to be on the other side by the parks. And that, that road from Jackson needs to be continued on. So, there's more paving that needs to be done, whether it's done in phases or what. Because the other side by the ballparks, by the Miracle League, there's some big potholes and big dips over there, huge.
So, we have a motion in a second. It was nicely worded by Ms. Worley. I think we probably need to act on that.
All right, let's poll the council.
But is that the 78,000? Because we just circled around again.
No.
It's, it's the 200. It's go for it? Can, can you read the motion so that we all know what we're?
Yeah, a lot of times when there are long motions, I listen later, because I'm not a court reporter. So, the last one I got was proceed as a planned, as planned, going forward, requesting the RPAC money, adjust the court for more play space. That was the Deborah Worley wording.
Say that again, the initial, RPAC?
Proceed as planned, going forward, requesting the RPAC money, adjust the court for more play space.
So, that's just the court?
No, the RPAC money would be included.
Oh, yeah, I, I included the total amount, the request, the amount of 299,274 from RPAC.
Yeah, the RPAC money includes the paving and everything. At, just everything the way it is, the way it was previously approved, right? And just move forward the way it is.
With the courts.
With the, with the exception of moving the pickleball courts a little bit to provide a little more space.
As far south as we can.
That's correct, yes. So, to your point, to move the pickleball courts. And then, other than that, leave everything the way it is with asking for everything that's, that's posted on that paper.
So, I want to clarify, because the initial was 78,000. And, and then at the last meeting was when, okay, we have this matching to go in for the paving. And I don't recall the town council has ever had the discussion to approve the 50% match at the higher of the 200,000. That's where we had this discussion. We said, let's table it. So, when we say, well, now we want to approve, that's not what was approved. We're saying, now we want to approve that. I don't, right? I don't recall a town council meeting where the 200,000 match was approved.
That is correct. The $200,000 match has not been approved, but that's a 29% match, not a 50% match.
Right. So, just so the motion is, you know, if, if that's the new motion to now go forward to approve the 200,000, because it was 78,000.
But that does include now the parking, paving, which I can't see doing one without the other. I mean, we need paving down there. I think we need paving more than pickleball courts almost. But it's, it's all in the mix. I mean, if you want to go back to 78, just have pickleball courts, they're not going to have any paving.
And then we're, we're, I think we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot. And I think we need to go ahead with it as, as it is here with the match. And that way, we can, we can make a decent, nice sports complex with this. And hopefully, everything gets approved, and we can, and we can move forward. We can always backtrack if we, if we don't get approved. We can always backtrack, but.
They should give us some money.
As Ms. Worley said, if we don't ever ask for it, we're never going to get it. So, we, we've spent a lot of time on this, months and months, as, as Mr. Wilson brought to our attention. And once again, we need to move forward.
You got it?
I think so. We're including now.
This.
As presented.
Yes. Yes, right like that.
Am I including that in the motion?
Yes.
So the motion reads right now, the way the motion reads is proceed as planned, going forward, requesting the RPAC money, adjust the court for more place space, and am I including the two ninety-nine?
Well, I think when I said the, including the requesting the RPAC money of two hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-four, so I actually called out the amount at that time.
Yeah.
And then...
Who made that motion?
I made the motion.
You made the motion, you, who seconded it? You seconded, okay.
I think Deborah's just providing the wording.
Yeah, just providing the wording.
And O K on the first and second.
You agree with that? Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Go ahead and poll the council.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
No.
And I respect you for that, totally.
Okay, thank you. We now go to 5D4 Advisory Board Appointments. I think you got several.
So, just so you have, and you can make your decisions about what you have, and I think we attached the, did you, did we put the?
No, did not. Also, I'd like to point out, somebody contacted me just at this meeting and wanted to know what the application for CRA was, so just to put that out there that...
So, so far we have one interested party at Loop Rack, one interested party in the LPA, we have two openings on the LPA, I think two, possibly three.
Three, three LPA.
And then we have three LPA, and then currently two, possibly a third interest in the CRA. So, you had stated at your previous meeting that you wanted them to come make presentations or talk to the council, if I understood that correctly. So, I did not ask them to come to this meeting since we didn't even have, in that timeline.
I don't think we voted to do that. I think we talked, and I think that Ms. Hayes wanted that, I don't...
Okay, well, y'all clarify.
I think it was the same as what when Ms. Worley was, said, I'll take the open council position, and she just came and introduced herself and gave a little background. So, whether that's a presentation, it's more or less a, just give us a background.
Yeah, I'm not looking for a PowerPoint here. I'm just looking like you said.
Introduction. Let me reword that, introduction.
So, is, I'm, I'm just wondering if we can decide on any of these. So the person who approached you today, can you say which position they approached you on?
CRA.
CRA.
But you've already got two applications.
So, so the utilities, we still just have one person?
Mm-hmm.
So, that could be somebody we could, in the LPA, you said you have?
One person.
Just the one person?
And those positions, I think, have been open for a long time, maybe? I don't know.
So the LPA, you had, the reason, you had a alternate that has been open, and you also had Hoz Compton resign, so you have an extra opening there. The Loop Rack is open because Ms. Everhart got elected to the council.
Okay.
So that's a new one. And then you chose to add the...
Two people to the CRA.
Yes, and you still have to take that vote, I believe it. If you want to take and add those people, you'd have to take the vote to add the people. Whether you do it at the time, you add the actual names, or you say, we're going to take a vote and add two people to the CRA, I think is immaterial.
Well, we already said we would add two people to the CRA.
Yeah, we, we did, but I think that was my confusion from last time, was that, did we make, did I make that motion and did that motion pass in the right arena? Or do we need to make it now again?
No, we did it.
Was it, was it done?
It was in the minutes.
Was it done correctly the first time?
Yeah, it's in the minutes and everything, it was in the consult one, which we approved too.
As long as, yeah, I know it was in the minutes, but it was in the town council meeting minutes, right?
Yes, that we approved during.
So then we're good with it. So we're good with it, we're good with the extra two people?
Good with that.
Okay, cool.
Well, if there's only one person for the Loop Rack, it's been two weeks, three weeks? I think we could go on.
About two weeks.
It's been a month.
Well, it's been a month since we...
It's been a month since we, right, acknowledged and asked for input, and then...
So, can, can we go forward with at least that one?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Yeah. The, the person that put his name in was Jack Conley?
Yes, correct.
And I had made copies of his res, I had made copies of his resume, he had given it to me earlier, and it's probably in that application also.
Yeah, I don't have it.
Okay, well, I have.
Oh, you have.
I have what he gave me.
Yes, so, yes, it's just going to make it be his resume.
And, I believe he's qualified. I can read it off?
I'm, I'm just curious as to why, if these positions have been open for such a long time, what is the big deal if we leave it open one more month? Just to make sure that we have, that we haven't left anybody out.
They haven't been open for a long time. It's, the utilities one is with Joy being placed on the council, and then, I think it was the last meeting, that's where Kevin had brought the process that we need to replace Joy from the utility.
But then Hoz Compton resigned from one of those boards, too.
Well, that's, that's a different, I, I, maybe we take them one at a time.
Yeah, I'm just doing one at a time, I'm just doing the utilities one now.
Of course, yes, but I just don't understand the...
Because these boards need to have the people in them, and it's very hard, especially in this specific position, to find someone that's actually qualified. It's a very technical position, and that's why we even take people that don't live in town and that, you know, basically if you have the qualifications, you can sit on that board, because we need really smart people.
Well, one of the requirements of that commission is that they have technical expertise.
Exactly, exactly, yeah. But this is the only person in the county that has technical expertise that wants to do it? So far, yeah.
So far.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I think we got to leave it open another month, plus the, the person isn't even here, because we didn't invite him, so, you know.
Well, he was here, and he spoke earlier.
Yeah, I know.
Do you want to?
Oh, I know.
Give us his background?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, because I personally would like to, if we've got openings and we can fill them, let's fill them.
Okay, so, I don't know which, if it's in chronological order going forward or backwards, but he is twelve years with furlough associates designing sewage collection, stormwater, and interior plumbing systems. He was eleven years with Stoner Webster Engineering, and I know that firm, it's a big, big consulting firm. Eleven years designing wastewater, domestic water, fire protection systems for both above and below ground applications at nuclear power plants. One year at Lizewski, construction inspection, startup and testing of a thirteen MGD sewage pumping station. One year as vital associates, construction inspection, startup and testing of ten sewage meeting and sampling stations. Ten years at Hill International, construction inspection, startup and testing of seven sewage pumping station, three miles of underground sanitary sewer, and the world's largest in-vessel sewage sludge composting facility. Responsibilities also include review of contractors' monthly payment requests. Twelve years, City of Hollywood, Florida, construction inspection, startup and testing of various projects consisting of renovations to city hall, police buildings, community centers, parks and recreation, and street rebuilding projects. Street projects included sanitary sewer and storm sewer piping, along with street lighting, bricklayer sidewalks, irrigation, and responsibilities there also included review of contractors' monthly payment requests.
Oh.
And Stoner Webster is a well-known mega consulting firm.
Did you say you have copies?
I had copies, and I, somehow, all I have are two of them left, three, three, two.
It's okay, I understand.
Oh, but I could hand them down for you.
Been there, done that.
Hand that one down. Thank you.
You probably already know him, right?
Why don't you make the motion so you get his name right?
Okay, so, I would make a motion then, that Jack Conley be accepted for the Loop Rack position? Second?
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the podium? Okay, saying none, we'll take it to the audience.
Pam Fentress, I attend normally utilities meeting, just two points, has this been before the utilities commission yet? So, I'd just ask you to consider, I know you're here, you're going to vote on it, but I read the packet tonight, and it says, I thought it said like, decision until July meeting, I know that was your recommendation, Kevin, but also, if I was the chairman of a committee, if I was on a committee, and then I was told by town council at the next meeting that they had appointed someone without prior knowledge, I think you ought to take that into account, and also, I think he's well qualified based on what you wrote or you just read, but also, I've attended these meetings for years, and then, except for the joint meetings between town council and utilities, I don't remember seeing him in the audience as a participant. So, he may be qualified, but will you get into the same thing where he's new, he has great ideas, he has insight, we're going to rehash the last three years utilities in this path? So, I guess when I look at things, too, I look at the, the impact on staff, and I, I think a lot of good ideas were brought up tonight, but you only have so much money and so much manpower. Thank you.
We'll bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
I'm going to say no, because I feel like I'm being forced to make a decision, not because this gentleman is not qualified, but I still feel like we told the people we would leave it open longer, and we're not, so I'm going to say no for that reason.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
So, but, so LPA, we had one person for two openings?
Yes, we had one person for two openings.
We have two openings or three?
I think we only have two, but anyway, we're going to call them two for tonight. And Hoz brought his, actually, resume in, I don't have it in the packet, and I apologize for that. He lives in the same subdivision as Waters Edge, Garcia, Alejandro Garcia, maybe? I can't, I'm sorry, don't remember his name, I'm terrible with names. So, but he did, he did submit his resume, he is qualified for the LPA, he's, so, I don't have his name, but if you want to go appoint him, since he's the only one that supplied, that's up to you, and you can, although it's the only applicant we have. We do have multiple openings on that board.
I think we need his name.
And a resume or some information on him.
If you want to go to the...
Okay, well, why don't we just go ahead and let those LPA and CRA go till July? Is that okay with everybody? And then that's it, we're going to fill these positions, because we, we need to. I mean, people don't show up, and then if we don't have a quorum, and we've advertised, and nothing moves forward, and...
We have enough trouble moving forward now. I would agree with that. Let's, let's do the other two in July.
Is that okay, to wait till July? Okay. Do we need a motion for that? I don't think so.
I think so. So, all right, then we'll move on to...
Okay, next is 5D5, tangerine to Interlake sidewalk to trail request.
Okay, so a little bit of history on this one. The, this is actually, I wrote it wrong, tangerine to Catfish Creek along Interlake. The county has what they call transportation alternative funding. They have funding to build a sidewalk on the south side of Interlake, five-foot wide sidewalk. We have been talking to them and DOT, trying to get them to move it to the north side where we own a thirty-foot right-of-way, and change that to an eight-foot path. There's some question about whether they can delay that. There is also, in conjunction with that, the Collier Topol Sun Trail, which is in its infancy and design and won't be fully vetted and funded for eight to ten years, but I think there's opportunity. This same path is DOT's primary path for that Sun Trail portion. So, my, what am I, my goal was to have DOT delay the funding of the sidewalk, we're going to end up with a five-foot sidewalk, and they could take that five hundred thousand plus and add three hundred thousand or two hundred and seventy thousand to it and put in a twelve-foot asphalt, twelve-foot paved asphalt path, which is a multi-use path on our property. If they would do that, then we have a segment of the trail, and it's built to Sun Trail specification, so then we're ahead of the game for additional funding. Barring that, then I would say the county needs to build their five-foot sidewalk on the south side like they planned, and we keep our property open for a twelve-foot path that will actually be usable for bicycles and, and pedestrian traffic. I think the majority of pedestrian traffic that's going to come out of Placid Lakes, Lake June Point, would be on bicycles and not walkers, so there's no shoulder on the side of Interlake. I think it's a hazard for people to ride on that road, a lot of people do it every day, I pass them on a regular basis. But my request is to write a letter asking them to delay that, officially asking them from the town to delay that funding request and try and add to it and make it part of a Sun Trail path, so.
May I add to that? I absolutely support and agree with Kevin's approach. I would suggest we consider an alternative, and that would be to ask the county to fund the additional two hundred and seventy thousand to widen the path, because they have built a tremendous number of trails and paths in the Sebring area and not yet here. And this grant is a pretty darn good start, we've acquired the thirty-foot right-of-way for it, and it's a, would be a fair contribution for them to support, and then we continue the maintenance. Okay.
I agree with all of that, so...
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion, just...
As long as y'all are good with it, then we'll write a letter.
As long as you nod yes or no.
I'm good. I would love for you to write a wonderful letter. I think you got it. Moving on.
They're going through a budget now, so it'd be timely to say we'd like.
Yep.
Okay.
If you let me know when you're going, I'll show up if you're going to do this.
All right. Anything else to come before council?
Alex Ramos.
Alex Ramos, yeah.
If that changes your mind.
Okay, I'll go to my department heads, we have anything you want to bring before council? No, everybody fine? Any other comments from the audience?
Once again, my name is Margaret Dear. Thank you all for your service. It was great to see our neighbors so passionate about the issue with pickleball, and I understand that council would like more input from the public, but to see neighbors pitted against neighbors and verbally accosted in a public forum was extremely uncomfortable, and it felt like it got a little out of control, that I wasn't quite sure who was running this operation, that I didn't think that there should be cross-talk between this podium and the audience, and I would just hope that in the future that maybe we could try to manage that a little bit, a little bit better. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll bring it back to the podium.
Just two things real quick, is the soccer, update on the soccer, we have the person that's starting a soccer league and a soccer club, and he has just under a hundred people that have signed up for it, and so I know Harry's been working with you, the soccer fields are looking good, and this weekend is kind of the kickoff where they're going to, you know, have, I don't like the word assessment, but all of the, it's the kickoff at the park for all of those interested in soccer, so I think that's a good thing to get that back up and running. And then the other, just, just a comment, at the workshop, the CRA workshop, Mr. Mayor, you weren't there, and Ms. Worley did a great job, you know, as the vice mayor for that CRA workshop, and then our attorney came in late, so, in fact, we didn't even know that Bert was... And then, um, our attorney came in late, so, in fact, we didn't even know that Brett was going to come, which was fine. So, we all kind of scrunched together. And I, I liked being, having the council members all closer together. And I've done some research on the other, you know, different other cities and towns on the DS makeup. And, you know, some have the attorney and the town council, and the clerk down there, others have them on the ends or on the side. And I like when, like, right now, I'm seeing five microphones before I can see, you know, um, Joy down there. So, I'd like to ask our consideration of just rearranging where we have the, um, the town attorney on one end, the town administrator on the other, and then we, the five town council members, are all in the cit, in the center.
Okay.
Gives us a better chance to have those discussions amongst the council members, but solicit the attorney and the administrators' impact when we need it.
Give us something to think about and.
Well, how do we, do it, does that need to be a motion, or? Can we just decide on it now, or, I mean?
I think we should just.
Maybe we don't all agree with it.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
I don't agree. You can't see over my head?
I didn't say that. I said it's.
My head.
I didn't say that at all. I said it's the discussion amongst the five council members.
I'm really, really tired.
No, I said between Joy, I see five microphones.
Yeah, can we just do it next meeting? Let's put it on the agenda and really.
Sure, that's fine.
Give everybody a chance.
As I said, how do we do that?
Give everybody a chance to think about it.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Okay, now?
The, the young lady that came up and spoke about pavement and beautification concerns, um, I, I'm afraid, I'm sorry that she's not here now, but she was also not here when we were in the CRA meeting, so she didn't understand or didn't know that we're already considering those things that she brought up. So, I just want to make sure that she knows, or it goes on record, that we are talking about pavement and beautification concerns, and we put those things on our CRA list. But that's a different pot of money than what we were talking about for the pickleball courts. So, understand that that would also be done as well. And, um, I got the idea when we finally made the final decision to put the police department, the new building here, on this property, and I always go that way when it's not even there. But anyway, on this property, that this property would be a municipal, um, complex, if you will, with, um, the area out back, hopefully, for a fire department or EMS station or both to the, to the future. So, and I, um, agree with Ken LeBlanc in what he said, that we should have a plan for this. If this is going to be a municipal complex, we should come up with a plan. I think that's a good idea.
Thank you. Deborah?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to bring up is, while I was there at the TDC appointment, um, the fire department came up, and Arlene Tuck did a great job, our county commissioner of, you know, pushing, saying we were on the back burner, they need to move forward. And then the, the response was, "We are moving forward," and, um, and I got up and spoke because I don't think that they understood that we owned the building. So, I said, you know, oh, I have to say too, Don Elwell took up the challenge and helped Arlene, and he was on our side, and let's move forward. And the, what the outcome was, is I did get up, the only thing, he said, "Please don't undo everything I just said." And I said, "I'm not going to." I just said, "I just didn't think," and I told him, I said, "You, we own the building that you're in, and we need to move forward because we're experiencing our utility, and we need to know what we should do." And I said, "So, we should be in the loop, totally in the loop, every step of the way, because we own the building, and we don't want to have to build another facility when we have that one, if it's going to be available." So, anyway, I told him that, and then Ray Royce got up and really championed the clause, and I was so thankful that he did. So, out of the outcome of that, Don Elwell said they are going to have a memo every meeting with an update. Okay, every meeting, they're requiring it, so that there's no slipping through the cracks anymore. They're going to have to be accountable, every meeting that they meet, of where they're at with our new fire department.
Good, okay.
I think Colleen is a little bit, Colleen's being a little bit modest about the, uh, the football, what, whatever. When we were door knocking and listening to people, and there was this, um, thing about, a lot of people mentioned soccer. And we got a couple of names of people who would volunteer or who were interested, and that's how she got the name of, uh, Dan, what is Dan? And I think you probably brought them all together.
Okay. Kevin?
Two things. Gentlemen sitting way back in the back, can you hear us okay tonight?
It was the best I've ever heard in all the meetings I've been.
Okay, then, then we're making, then we are making progress. We are not done, but we are making progress. So, we could not get access, we said we were going to have, the mics have been adjusted to some extent, the amps been changed. They could not install the speakers in the back because you can't get access to some of that area, but they can get to some of the area. So, we have to modify our plan for the speakers in the back, but there will be speakers in the back, hopefully, before the next meeting. It's an access issue, you can't get through crawl spaces, there's firewalls up there, so our plan for the speakers had to get modified. So, I just wanted to double-check on that. So, we are making progress on that, and that's good to know. The council already knows, I, as of today, so everybody else knows it, um, I will be remaining as utilities director. I'm not leaving the town, but I have turned in my resignation as the town administrator. So, I think we just need discussion or quick discussion or approval to advertise for a new town administrator.
You need a motion.
Good, I don't think we need a motion.
I don't think we need a motion.
I don't think so.
I mean, he's, he's officially resigned, so it's something we have to do, so.
With regret, yes.
And he's not going anywhere, so. Mr. Attorney?
Not a word, thank you. I, unfortunately, I will not be at the next meeting. We had a chance to go to Alaska and go fishing, and the only date available for the next two years was July 8th through the 15th. So, we jumped on it and took it. Otherwise, I would have not taken that date if there was others available, but I will not be here, so Deborah, you will be.
I don't know if I can fill those big shoes, but I'll try. You know, I ran into Mike Eisenhardt, and he said he had told you, invited you to come up.
Actually, Mike gave me the name and number of, of the owner of this resort, and when I called him, he said that Mike is right, that they normally stay booked for two years in advance. But just the night before, the gentleman had called and canceled their reservations from, from the 8th through the 15th. And he said, "If I wanted them, I've got it," so we jumped on it, so.
That's great.
It was just one of those things that, I, you know, I've always wanted to do it, and my wife was, my beautiful wife was in agreement. So, she knew it was on my bucket list. So, anyway, that, I'm, I will be gone, but, uh, I appreciate all of you being here, and, and I, I know it's in capable hands, so. That's right, that's right, so. Is there any other thing to come before council?
Yes. You have your next meeting, a three-minute timeout for the board of chairs.
Well, you, you know, and, and we can do that, but, you know, Greg, this is, this is the only time, we've got it right here, and this is the only time people can stand up and really tell us what they think and what they want. And a, a lot of times, to do it in three minutes, uh, now, if, if it starts to get out of hand, yeah, I, I definitely will. But th, these were important issues, and I just never want to handcuff people and only tell them. I, I'd rather them have a few more minutes and say what's on their mind, and, and then we, then we make the decision we have to make. But, but I appreciate that comment. Okay, nothing else?